Good evening. I'd like to call to order the 7:00 PM, Monday, November 4th, City Council Regular Meeting. Welcome, everyone. And for those of you that would like to join the council, myself and the Pledge of Allegiance, please stand.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So before we start this evening's meeting, I would like to talk a little bit about some of the changes you might notice in the room this evening. We have made quite a few changes. We've introduced a new laser projector, which is now projecting to a screen that is behind the dais. Council members and executive staff have small monitors at each workstation that broadcast the same content as you're seeing on the projector behind us. We are now using two podiums, one for audience comments and one for the staff presentations over to the left. A new timer is being used for audience comments here in front of the city clerk. The city's art displayed behind the dais will be relocated in the east wall above the whiteboard in the near future. So we're very excited and we hope this improves the functionality and image quality for those that are watching at home. We're going to start off this evening with audience comments, and this is the time that audience members may address the council. The guidelines for public participation are displayed on the screen, and please limit your comments to five minutes. Those who signed up will be called forward first, and if you did not sign up, I'll make sure that we ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. If you are here as part of a group, please identify a spokesperson for your group. And if you are here in the audience listening this evening and you hear comments that resonate with you and you want to demonstrate your support, please raise your hand so council can see how much support there is in the room. There's also a public hearing tonight, AB 7757, the 2020 Levy and Revenue Sources. If you would like to make comments on that particular topic, you will have an opportunity later in the meeting. There's another announcement I want to make tonight before we start, and I'd like to talk about the Issaquah School District re-designation and rezone and provide some comments in case folks have shown up this evening hoping to address council on this topic. The City of Issaquah is currently considering changes to the land use designation and zoning of eight parcels owned by either the city or Issaquah School District, including three parcels commonly called the Providence Heights property that the school district recently acquired. The proposed new zoning for these three parcels would enable the construction of a high school, and the current zoning only allows for an elementary and/or a middle school. The city's Planning Policy Commission reviewed the proposal for the three parcels and recommended keeping the existing zoning for two parcels and a re-designation/rezone of one parcel to community facilities' open space. The proposed land use changes require a State Environmental Policy Act, or CIPA, process, which identifies and analyzes environmental impacts associated with governmental decisions. As many of you know, the Providence Point Umbrella Association has filed an appeal of the CIPA determination of nonsignificance issued by city staff for the comprehensive plan redesignation and rezone, the request that is related to the Issaquah School District property. Because this appeal is quasi-judicial and will be heard by the Issaquah City Council on December 2nd of this year, the city council may not hear audience comments tonight on any of the issues in the CIPA appeal. When something is quasi-judicial, that means that the council must act like judges and may not hear testimony or evidence related to the appeal outside of the December 2nd, 2019 Appeal Process hearing. For those not familiar with the issues in the CIPA appeal, they are whether the school district should have been the applicant for the comprehensive plan amendment and rezone rather than the city. The city planning staff considers the city to be the applicant for the entire 2019 Comprehensive Plan Amendment and Rezone package. Secondly, whether the information on the CIPA checklist used to evaluate the potential impacts of the 2019 Comprehensive Plan Amendment and Rezone package was adequate and complete with respect to the school district property. Third, whether the city appropriately used phased environmental review in this instance. Under CIPA, phased environmental review is to be used when some of the environmental issues related to a proposal are known and are ready for decision and other issues are not yet ready. Fourth, whether the not applicable answers to some of the questions on the CIPA checklist are accurate. And fifth, whether the comprehensive plan amendment and rezone of the school district property will have probable significant adverse environmental impacts due to traffic and site access, fire police and other public services, light and glare, noise, the differences in setbacks and other land use regulations associated with the current single-family comprehensive plan designation and zoning, and the proposed CFF designation and zoning, drainage and stormwater runoff to Providence Point, drainage and stormwater runoff to Laughing Jacobs Creek, removal of trees and vegetation, and loss of wildlife habitat. So once again, the council cannot hear testimony tonight on these issues, and if you want to speak on other issues tonight, you are welcome to do so. But if you come up to the podium and you want to testify regarding any of the CIPA issues, I will have to stop you and will ask that you refrain from speaking further on these matters. The city clerk's office and the city attorney are working to determine an appropriate way for the public to share their input on this issue, and information will be provided on the city's website later this week. Right now, there is email piling up in our council members' boxes, and they are not able at this point in time to read them or respond. As we work to confirm with the parties of the appeal as to how we can acknowledge these emails and make them part of the record for council hearing, we're still working on that process, so please be patient with us. If you have written in and have not heard back, we will be acknowledging all of those emails. So with that very lengthy introduction to audience comments, I will check to see if anybody has signed up to speak this evening.
Yes, Senator Mark Mullet.
Our inaugural public speaker.
This one now.
That's it. You're up.
Good evening, council, Madam Mayor, and apologies, I am on the topic that you've mentioned, so I'm going to try to be delicate and shut me down if necessary. Before that, my condolences on your father. I went through that myself, and I know how difficult it is, so I'm sure this is tough to be back. The, yes, my perception during my time in public office is the average citizen never differentiates between a school district, a city legislative branch. I think they just view us all as government, and so I think sometimes I find in my role, you end up involved in some local issues just because you feel that the average people just view it as one big giant umbrella. And I think that, I know you guys are working through all this, and I just think from my perspective, a lot of the focus is on the traffic right here in Second Avenue. From, one of the things that's always been appealing to me is if we do end up with a new high school somewhere else in Issaquah, 700 kids get transferred out of the high school on Second Avenue, and I always kind of view this area where we're sitting right now as kind of ground zero of traffic misery in the afternoon. And so I think any steps we can make, you know, as a community that end up, you know, helping to solve that problem, I think it's going to benefit residents of Issaquah and just the community in general. So I just wanted to make those comments, and I think this issue, as it moves forward between now and the end of the year, is going to be an issue that will have large regional benefits. I hope we figure out a way to make things work and keep all the different sides happy. And I guess just my final comment, I know this is budget week, this is totally different comment. If you're debating between 4% and 3.5%, my vote is the lower number. But thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Senator. Next, Tisha.
Good evening. My name is Larry Franks. I reside at 24001 Southeast 103rd Street for the last 47 years so far, and I'm also representing the friends of the Issaquah Salmon Hattery, and we have several more members. Now is a good time to raise your hands. And what I'll be sharing is a status of how our fish are doing, and I don't have an ask for a change, so this is informational, and the button works just fine. This year, we had a very, very poor return on top of last year's poor return. We had to borrow eggs from another hatchery in order to meet our escapement goals. We've done a number of things to try to turn this around. There's a long delay here. Okay. Do I need to aim this in a particular spot? Oh, I need to aim it at you. Okay. Okay. Oh, here we go. So the numbers tell the tale. So without looking at the specifics of, yes, we did get 45,000 fish back here 19 years ago. This year, we are scraping along at less than 2,000 fish, so we have had to, as I say, borrow eggs from other hatcheries in order to meet our escapement goals. We've done several things, several with the support of the City of Issaquah. The top one was a Washington state bill that was supposed to help with predators who were chowing down on our fish before they managed to make it to the saltwater, and basically it got modified. It got eviscerated in committee somewhere and won't make any difference whatsoever. And there've also been efforts to remove the predators directly. This has been carried out by the Muckleshoot Tribe, a step in the right direction, but again, no net effect on the, oh, that wasn't meant to be a pun, no net effect on the number of fish so far. Another solution that we experimented with was to go around the predators altogether by trucking the fish almost all the way to the saltwater, and it turns out that NOAA Fisheries, who enforces the Endangered Species Act, won't let that happen. It would impact other fish. So we do have some potential actions in front of us that we could do. One of the big deals is that the majority of our fish aren't even caught anywhere around here. They are caught off of the coast of Alaska and British Columbia. The challenge there is that the, as soon as you add countries to states, to other jurisdictions, the complexities of those negotiations mean no likely help there in the near future. Another one, the second bullet there is to experiment with when the smolder released. It turns out that most of our fish are eaten by warm water fish, by bass and perch, and the earlier we can release our fish, the less active those bass are, so that might help. So one of the other things that we're looking at is fully funding the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife. There are a number of things that are suggested by the Killer Whale Task Force Recovery that have not been funded and that can help even with Issaquah fish themselves. That's my story. As a private citizen, the one thing that I wanted to add was to encourage the city to support the Clean Fuel Initiative, which is tied to K-4C and other programs that I know you're familiar with. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Larry.
I'll leave this up here.
Tisha, next on the list.
Next, we have Heather Finerly and Malia Greening.
Did you bring a presentation this evening?
We did.
Yeah. Sit up. Okay.
Yeah. My name's Heather Finerly. I live in downtown Issaquah in the Bush Street neighborhood. We are here to talk to you guys about kind of a renewed issue. It's nothing new. I've lived in Issaquah for over 11 years, and it has been something that has been brought to city council probably every year that I have lived here. I know that Malia and I have been in attendance to city council for that reason multiple times together. I know that she has spoke multiple times to several of you as well. And we are here to be proactive. We have suggestions. We have compiled information that we want to share with you, and we're not taking it lightly in what we are asking for, but we also know that it's not a new ask. And in being proactive in that ask, I guess we'll take a look at the traffic calming. Malia and I actually went door-to-door over the last couple of days and put notices on every single door that we could find in that old town calming area, asking for input. We created an email address to start collecting stories, and some of those stories are still coming in, because as we looked at some data, which doesn't give us a whole lot right now, we intend to come back next month with more information. But as we pulled information and police records, what we found is that there were 177 incidents of police involvement relating to traffic over a 10-month period after traffic calming happened. We, of course, need to look at what happened beforehand. What I did then, of course, is try to make sense of it, and I highlighted a bunch of stuff in figuring out, okay, which ones are actually on our streets involved in that map, which ones are accidents and hit-and-runs and reckless driving, which ones are just being pulled over for traffic tickets, and which ones are for parking. And I divided all of those up, and the predominant number in the group were accidents, hit-and-runs, and reckless driving. Our problems in our neighborhood because of the traffic calming have actually gotten greater, and they've gotten greater because the restrictions of the left-hand turn lanes are not there, and they were taken away without identifying clear crosswalks. They are also there because there is a lack of signage for school zone around Clark Elementary. There's over 4,000 students enrolled in four schools within a two-block radius. There's no signage. Add to that the support staff, teachers, the bus barn that's right there as well, as well as thousands of commuters who are using Second and Sunset to cut through front-street traffic and access to and from I-90, and our neighborhood's caught in the middle. The speed bumps are not high enough to slow people down. And what we have found, one day inadvertently, was that people are turning off of Second, and they're scattering. Actually, can you go back to that? And they're scattering. So if you see Sunset way up there, they're scattering through the neighborhoods, and they are racing the light off of Second and Sunset because they're trying to turn left and beat that traffic light, and they're cutting through one, streets that are made for one car. They're cutting through neighborhoods, and our neighborhoods and our streets are not made as main arterials. We have a problem, and we need help now. There's already been, go ahead and do the next one. There's already been a near-fatality accident on Sixth and Sunset that I understand is still under investigation. And that accident is right next to the Old Town Traffic Calming. If you haven't seen it, you can walk there and see where the first point of impact is and blood stains that are still on the street. It's rained heavily since that accident happened, and there are still human marks on the road, and there's been no change. There's been no call to action, and there's been no attention given to our neighborhood. Let's see. I'd like to also note that that accident happened around 4:00 in the afternoon, and had those left-hand, excuse me, 3:30, had those left-hand restriction signs still been there, perhaps that accident wouldn't have happened. Removing the restriction signs made our neighborhood more dangerous next to an I-90 major interstate and a very popular trailhead. There are no crosswalks on Sunset at any of the, any of the turns that are happening.
And there's no restrictions anymore.
There's no, and there are no longer restrictions.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, actually, Malia's going to show you something earlier. If you take a look at the right-hand side, the first marking above the white line by the stop sign, just note that when you watch her video, because you're going to see cars who, that's what I'm assuming is the first point of impact. You'll see cars hitting.
Did you already talk about?
No, that's you.
Oh. Okay. So I'm kind of going to repeat what Heather already said. So what we want and what we need is left-turn restriction signs during both peak rush hours reinstated, because those were taken out when the traffic calming was put in, which was all the speed bumps and all that. And what we're thinking is adding a local resident permit sticker, so for the people that did not like those signs, that wanted them down, they could still enter the neighborhood with a special sticker, which we've seen in other neighborhoods. We definitely want an added light or lighted crosswalk or four-way stop at Second and Bush, where all the kids are crossing to get to the elementary school, because right now, when Tanya isn't there with her flag, people just fly through it. I usually have to get out there and wave everybody down like this to get the cars to stop. We also would like heavier police presence until those things, until those things are in place. We want a school zone sign, which she mentioned earlier, and then we would also like a lighted crosswalk at Sixth and Sunset, and just all along Sunset at all the intersections. I'm going to show a video to you next.
Actually, I, just examples of signage that would be effective of having the no-turn signs and things that are strictly enforced, posting, posting what the fine is. I don't know what it is, I just looked something up. But posting what the fine is to make sure that it is visible and that people know what's going on, because right now, when we're standing there just watching the traffic, they don't care. There's no, there's no impact at all to turning left and endangering our families.
I'm going to be showing a video too, where they turned, not only are they turning left from Sunset onto Sixth, but because there's so much traffic backing them all the way up down Sunset, they actually come into the opposite lane of traffic, so going against traffic, and then they turn. So I'm going to show a video of that in a second here. So now, I think I get clicked again, and then it starts moving. Right? Please?
Yes.
So if you can see all the traffic backed up, we have the black car all the way back. These cars are going, you can see me move my, that's how far backed it up it is when all these cars are coming and turning. They're not waiting to turn where the white car is, they're turning way before. So that concerns me. That's how anybody could easily get hit crossing the street here.
They're also cutting the corner quite hard. They're crossing over the center line. There's another one, I think, that probably isn't in here. Cars are stopping short of that stop sign because they can't get up to that stop line right there. It makes it pretty easy to see where those markings are in the road to where that man was hit by a car that cut the corner.
So this was just one day I went out there, just one morning, I happened to go out and take this video. Now, like a lot of my neighbors who, whose emails we've collected, I have been out on several days. This was just one day last week I took this video, and this one shows you that in a minute and 10 seconds, we have 10 cars turning left onto Bush Street. Look at all these cars, just constantly turning, whereas in the past, we had a no-left turn sign, and a lot of these people, they come through the neighborhood, they whip through with high speeds, and as a mom, I've often said, "Slow down, slow down," and they will go faster and fly over the speed bumps with no care.
The speed bumps don't, and I don't know if this will work or not, but the speed bumps don't cause people to slow down. It's actually kind of a game that people play now, is they race between the speed bumps, and their speed bumps are not high enough so that they have to slow down at all. In fact, they go, they sail over them quite easily. Oh, it's this one, but if we can speed it up to 16, oh, it's right after this. Watch this truck come through, I believe, right now. Sorry. No, it's right after that. I thought we'd have more control over it, sorry.
So I do want to point out that there's similar speed bumps of this size, but a lot, there you go, but a lot higher up in the Overdale Park neighborhood, which is just above Fred Meyer. And when we were getting speed bumps, we thought that's what we were getting, not this, which doesn't do anything. Right.
Okay.
You're up next.
Oh, I don't know what's going on now.
Oh, she's fixing it.
Okay, thank you. This is an example of a signage of a left-hand turn restriction that has been placed in the DARS neighborhood, which is up above the map on the way into the high school. What we're having a hard time comprehending right now is our restrictions were taken out at the same time that these ones were put in. So even though they have similar traffic issues for one segment, which is just the high school and the middle school, we've got that as well as commuters that are cutting through our neighborhoods. I don't understand why those signs were installed and ours were taken out. If you take a look at that where it says, "Accept buses," that would be a really easy place to insert permits only, local permits, instead of accept buses. And we've got lots more information, and we're not stopping. We will be back.
Thank you, Heather and Malia. Tisha, who else has signed up this evening?
Hello, my name is Jennifer Crone. I'm a resident, 300 Southeast Bush Street. I'm here to support the traffic calming concerns. Heather and Malia set up an email for people to send in comments about what was happening, and here's a couple that illustrate pretty well some of the concerns we all have. This woman says, "I live on 400 block on Northeast Alder Street. Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, from 7:30 AM to 7:50 AM, traffic speeds down the street with reckless abandon. Students and families in a race to get ahead of the traffic on Sunset speed up from the first stop up and over the Mr. Toad's Wild Ride, traffic calming fun ride hump to the next stop sign. One particularly busy morning, I stood outside in my pajamas and counted 56 cars past me in just five minutes. Very few hit the brakes going over the hump. This scenario repeats itself in the early afternoon and again between 5:00 and 6:00 PM. The sidewalk access in this neighborhood continues to be spotty with many sidewalks dead-ending in someone's yard or cut off by overhanging branches or broken sidewalks. Thus, neighbors with babies in strollers, people walking their pets, children on bikes or walking or in the habit of walking on the street or in the alleys. Unfortunately, the cut-through people appear to be focused only on getting ahead of the line, not on driving 25 or slowing for pedestrians. Instead, they race down the streets and alleyways, taking exception to being asked to slow down," just as Malia and Heather said. "Last year, I sat outside my house at the same time of morning and evening each day and documented the number of cars passing, and I shared this information, excuse me, at traffic concern meetings. I attended numerous meetings to make sure I was informed. Then I was dismayed at the ultimate results of the traffic calming humps. Supposedly, they are the same height as the rubber trial humps installed on top of the roadway. When these humps were installed, the roadway was cut away, making me wonder if they were actually shorter than the rubber humps. In any event, they are not calming or slowing the traffic. This year, October 2, I contacted the city and requested the speed limit trailer. I was informed that my case was closed because the police were monitoring the speed of traffic. I was encouraged to contact the city again if this continued. Since my efforts were futile, I did not bother contacting them again. My concerns about the safety of the residents continue to persist. Many of the pass-through people are on their phones or talking to others as they speed down the street. With no speed limit signs, poorly-designed traffic calming devices, and inattentive drivers, it seems only a matter of time before the situation moves from annoying and dangerous to deadly, and it already has. In addition, Old Town residents are held hostage in the morning since the people who have cut through to get ahead are blocking the right-turn lane and intersection at Second and Sunset, further exacerbating the traffic problems on Sunset. Finally, the birch tree on the corner of Sunset and Second is overgrown and blocks the view of oncoming traffic for anyone attempting a right turn on Sunset from Second Avenue. Thank you for your time." And here's another one. "We live near the corner of Sixth and Bush. Drivers, most look like teenagers, take the corner so fast that sometimes I'm terrified that they will end up in our lawn. They often seem to do it intentionally, intentionally, and will go around the block many times in a row. Before we bought our house, this actually happened. A car nearly went through the front door. It's scary. People often take the speed bump so quickly, it's like they aren't there. I can think of at least six or seven kids that live around this corner, including our toddler. It's incredibly scary to watch cars race through the neighborhood, whether it's high schoolers or drivers obviously cutting through to get to I-90 or the Highlands. When we moved in this spring, we noticed police officers patrolling this area frequently. That never happens anymore, and drivers seem to be aware that they won't be penalized for breaking the rules." Anyway, this, as you can see, we have a lot of concerned neighbors, and these are things that I have observed as a resident as well. It's scary. I am worried that somebody is, there is going to be a fatal accident, and I just hope that we get something taken care of before that happens. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jennifer. Tisha?
Gail Paladines. My name is Gail Paladines, and I reside at 290 Southeast Andrews Street. I'm a resident, obviously. I would like to speak about the traffic calming in our area, as the ladies before me have. On Bush Street, next block down is Andrews. We started with the traffic calming last year when they first installed chicanes on our street. Those didn't work out, they didn't slow the traffic down. They caused a parking problem. Then they came out and installed humps. These humps that are in the roadway now are totally ineffective. Cars are speeding down, not slowing if you're crossing. I myself have nearly hit when I have looked to see if there were cars coming, saw one way down the road, proceeded to cross to get my mail, and I was nearly hit by a young fellow in a truck. I think we really need to do something about the left-hand I think we really need to do something about the left-hand turns off of Sunset onto Sixth. All of these cars are thuddling down onto Bush Street and Andrews as well. And I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Gail. Tisha?
Gail Given.
Good evening. I'm Gail Given, and I live at 360 on the Southeast Andrews Street bypass. Yes, that is the highway that connects people exiting the freeway to get to Issaquah-Hobart Road. I got some laughs with that several years ago when I made that comment, and it's still a sad joke. After many years of trying to do something about the cut-through traffic in our neighborhood, we residents were told that the city was going to enact traffic calming measures. At one point, our mayor, Mary Polly, stood with her feet firmly planted outside the city hall and told me and my neighbor Jenny Bingham not to worry because the no-left turn signs on Sunset will stay. I decided right then that Ms. Polly really cared about our neighborhood. After much research and neighborhood input, it was decided we would get speed humps and a circle on Andrews. Then we were informed that we no longer needed the signs on Sunset. I believe that the city had this in mind early in the process. Well, we residents tried to be calm and hoped that traffic really would get better. However, almost immediately, the speed humps turned into an obstacle course, a challenge for speeding drivers who realized that it was now a free-for-all. Those who don't like the speed humps just race down the alley. Today, traffic on our street is worse than ever, with car after car speeding through, endangering children, mothers with strollers, teenagers on skateboards and bicycles, people in wheelchairs, special needs residents, and senior citizens crossing the street to get their mail. Residents feel let down, resigned, angry, and hopeless. Something must change. Checking your work by laying out traffic counters again and restoring those signs would be a good start. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Tisha, next.
Jenny Bingham.
Mayor and council, I'm back. Traffic calming, as you all know. I probably visited this 18 years ago when they built the Highlands, and the traffic began to come because the high schoolers from the Highlands were starting to use our side streets. There was no light there, but then it was even backed up worse, so. And I spoke about the need, and I'm sure you that were here at the time, I spoke then, five years ago, four years ago, three years ago, the need for crosswalks running east and west on Fourth, Fifth, Sixth, both of Sunset, and again on Andrews and Bush wherever traffic crossed. Had there been a crosswalk, perhaps that gentleman would have used it, and the poor lady that hit him wouldn't have to go through what she's going through. To date, no crosswalks. Missing sidewalks for little Amy, who has to come down Andrews Street and go out in the road. In the meantime, somebody's jetting around Fourth Avenue, hits a speed bump, practically goes in the air to zoom down to Second Avenue. When they get there, there's seven or eight cars lined up. Don't know if they're faster. So, and the same thing that Gail said, you put the speed bumps up and took the signs down. There was no answer why, other than the city felt that they didn't need them. Had we have known that ahead of time, that it was going to be a bait and switch, we may have asked for more. We got $100,000, we were told, and I'm sure part of that was on the study of it spent. But four streets, that means only $250,000 was spent per street on traffic calming. Gosh, I could remodel my house for $250,000. So we claimed about the cut-through traffic when the Highlands was built, and almost 20 years later, it's a nightmare, as our streets are used as a city's bypass so that Sunset Way and Second Avenue run smoother with less congestion. So it looks like Issaquah's an inviting city, as long as everybody comes through and doesn't know they're all traveling down our little streets. So I guess I'm asking the city at this point, I understand $400,000 is being spent on Confluence Park for pretty new grass and irrigation. Is that more important than what this gentleman has gone through and a child that may die You guys can switch money, switch money, save a life, please.
Thank you, Jenny. Tisha, next.
Bill Freisenger.
I live at 415 Southeast Bush Street, and I want to thank the city for the traffic calming study and the way they involve the neighborhood in it. I realize some people are frustrated with it, it may very well be need to be tweaked, I wouldn't argue with that. In particular, if we could make it so you could do a left turn only for residents, that would be great. A former mayor that I know well claimed that was illegal. He said he couldn't do that, but revisiting the issue to see if it can be made to work would be wonderful. The humps are not, the humps are more, they're probably as high as they were before, but they're spread out much longer, so you can effectively take them faster than you could with the one in the study. But the thing I noticed on the humps is the humps are located only 90 feet back from the stop sign, like at Second and Bush. And you already got to slow then because you got a stop sign. So it would seem to me be better having them further back, and of course, sharper would help too. Although the sharper, of course, is more of a problem with the snowplow. I suspect the gradualness was driven by the snowplow. And your planning department may know why it makes sense to have the bump so close to the stop sign, but it would be good to have an explanation on that. Anyway, thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Bill. Tisha?
Marcy O'Neil.
Hello, my name is Marcy O'Neil. I live at 441 Northeast Alder. I won't repeat myself because the email that was read to you, the first one, was from me. And I'm not here to complain. I work in the school system, and I really take pride in being proactive and being solutions-oriented. I'm just really stymied at how to be a part of the solution. You know, as I said, I stood out and I took my data at different times of the day and documented those things. When I even go to stand outside or, like, will make a comment to someone about, "Hey, please slow down," I can't tell you how many times I've been flipped off, sworn at, people are getting more aggressive and more focused just solely on their needs rather than on being in a neighborhood. There are no speed limit signs, and I know people should know that they should be going 25, but they don't. It's a hyper, hyper-focus like this to get through. And I promise you, I know the families and the kids, because I taught a lot of them up, when I was up at Pacific Cascade Middle School, and I see them, and a lot of them, they just laugh when they go by. They want to get through, and they go from one stop sign to the next stop sign, and you can hear the engines rev, just vroom, so that they can get ahead of the line, get down to the street on Second, and then get across the road. My neighborhood in particular, there have been increase in the number, used to be primarily elderly people, but a lot more young children, and then also some elderly people who are, you know, limited in their mobility. And every day, I'm concerned that today's going to be the day that this happens. I don't know what the answer is. I wanted the speedwagon because last year we had it, and it seemed to calm things down a little bit. It increased people's awareness. But when I asked that, I was a little taken back by the response I got that the police were taking care of it and were watching the speed. Well, I can promise you, every single morning, like clockwork, you can just hear vroom, 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 at between 7:30 and 7:50, when the people are taking the alleyways, both behind my house and in front of the house, to get down the street and beat the Sunset traffic. So I will participate in anything that I can do to be proactive and to be part of the solution, but I do not see that the humps have calmed the traffic. And in fact, because people want to get ahead and get from stop sign to stop sign on my block, it goes from Fifth Avenue to Third Avenue in that one block, they pick up speed so that they can get down there quicker. So, thank you.
Thank you, Marcy. Tisha, next.
Bill Morse.
Is Bill here?
Bill will not be speaking.
Bill will not be speaking this evening.
Wrong line.
No worries. Next on the list?
Marilyn Leland.
Marilyn Leland?
No, I signed up the wrong line.
Okay, wrong line.
David Leland?
Great idea.
Is there anyone else on the list, Tisha?
No, no one further has signed up.
Absolutely. If you want to just raise your hand and come over here and form a little line, sure, we'll continue with speakers.
Hi, my name's Michael Tyson. I live at 440 Sunset Way. I've lived there for 25 years, so obviously, there's been a lot of changes in that time. I will tell you, some of the people are talking about crosswalks and the lights for the crosswalks on Sunset Way. There used to be a crosswalk on Sixth and Sunset, and they repaved the street one day, several years back, and the crosswalk went away. And after that is when they developed that parking area for Tiger Mountain hiking. So there's a lot more people using that now than there used to be. And so I think it's, the crosswalks that have been mentioned and the lights are needed. People come flying down that hill, and if we could start to slow that down somehow, I think that would be worthwhile. And I think the crosswalks, it's hard for my wife and I. We walk a lot, and we hike a lot, and it's a little bit difficult to get across Sunset Way. In fact, sometimes it's kind of impossible, unless you want to get out there and play Dodge, Dodge car with your body. So I think the crosswalks and the lights are definitely needed. The one by the police station here is helpful, and I'd like to see that along. Maybe that would at least regularly have people have to slow down. And especially that one coming down the hill at Sixth there is incredibly dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Elizabeth?
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Mopin. I live at 100 Big Bear Place. Tonight, I'm here partly to speak to Agenda Bill 7833, which has to do with the BNO tax. I think it's great that you are simplifying the business and occupational tax and the definition of businesses, and, thank you. I'll also take a moment to say that I'm glad to know that the city is trying to work on some plan for severe weather in the city. When it gets really cold and we have snow on the ground and traffic problems, like the buses change their routes, the people who are living outside and who really need shelter don't know where the buses have gone. If the city can't provide any kind of local shelter and we're expecting people to go elsewhere to get out of the cold, we could at least have the city put some signs up at the usual bus stops near the center of town to tell people where the bus moved to. Last time we had severe weather with snow, people didn't know where the buses were. And I would also encourage the city to continue to think about the fact that we have no human services campus, we have no day center, we have no emergency shelter in Issaquah. Those are things that would still make our city much better. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Want to come up?
Hi, my name is Julia Seidman. I live at 433 Southeast Clark Street, which is just off of Bush Street. And I am, I'm going to read from my phone. So when my husband and I were looking for a home where we could raise our children, we, a pedestrian-friendly neighborhood, was one of our top requirements. We wanted to establish our family in a community where we could make walking a part of our daily routine. And there are a lot of reasons for that, reasons that I believe that many people in the community share. When we moved to our home just off Bush Street, we thought we'd found the place where we could do that safely and reliably. In the last couple of years, and I actually don't know how long I've lived there, nine years, I think? Heather? Nine years. Heather says I've lived there nine years. In the last couple of years, my sense that the city is committed to maintaining that aspect of our neighborhood has been weakened. My daughter, who is now in kindergarten at Clark, attended Giggly Wiggly preschool, which is, I always feel a little silly saying it, but it's a preschool, for the last two years. Giggly Wiggly is located on Sixth Avenue between Sunset and Andrews Street. We walk to school most of the time, three or four days a week, regardless of the weather, with my son in the stroller and Evie, sometimes on a scooter, sometimes on a bike, most often on foot. After school, on nice days, we would often go to the park, right over here by City Hall. Each time, we had to make a choice. Would we walk down Sunset, crossing an uncontrolled intersection, there's no crosswalk, no light, and then where the sidewalks were continuous, although narrow, cracked, uneven, overhung with blackberry, lacking crosswalks, and where drivers jockeyed to make left turns through the neighborhood rather than wait at the light? Or would we walk down Andrews Street, where the visibility is better, but the sidewalks are frequently interrupted by gravel and grass and lac ramps, rendering them basically useless for anyone pushing a stroller, riding a scooter, or using a wheelchair? Fortunately, we never had any accidents beyond getting thrown off the scooter by the cracks in the sidewalk, and I had never spent too much time worrying about that choice. But now, virtually in front of Giggly Wiggly, there are bloodstains and paint marks from an accident investigation, visible from the top of the slide in the play yard. My daughter's preschool teacher made the 911 call after that accident. Can you imagine if there had been children there to witness it? The one-lane road past the front door to Giggly Wiggly used to be essentially a driveway, but is now a fire lane because of the townhomes near the trailhead. but is now a fire lane because of the townhomes near the trailhead and the parking area there. Parents now can't park in front of the school for drop-off anymore, so they have to park on Sixth Avenue. Dozens of preschoolers now cross the road in that exact spot every week, and hundreds of cars each day turn left out of traffic across their path. When Evie began school there, the left turn in that accident would have been illegal. My son will start preschool there this spring, and I hope that by the time he does, city council has gotten the message and stopped prioritizing development and commuters over the rights of pedestrians and my neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Julia. Lots of hands in the air. Is there anyone else who would like to come up and speak this evening? David, come on up.
This is different. David Kapler, 255 Southeast Andrews Street. I actually live on the western end, just east of Second on Andrews, and I've noticed personally, in my particular part of the street, a significant improvement with the city's project. But we got significant problems. There's still the speeding, certainly on the eastern part of Andrews, which actually is the original main street of Issaquah, and still doesn't have sidewalks. It predates I-90, US-10, Sunset Highway, the whole bit. And we're still, finally, Brett's crew's got all the stumps out of the road, and we don't have collapsing road anymore. But we still lack sidewalks on that street. You can be real sloppy in going westbound on Sunset and come into Sixth because of the lack of curbs and just how that is laid out. And I think that just kind of sets up, speed makes it easier for people to decide they're going to jump through a small gap in traffic and come in through that intersection on speed. They also continue their speed as they go to Sixth. They want to get to Bush. Bush is smoother surface. It's one block closer to getting out of town or wherever they're going. But also, if you come down Bush to Second, it's a lot easier typically to make a left turn or to go through over to Front Street at that intersection than it is in Andrews. And that's because that crosswalk at Second and Bush is quite active. So traffic stops for the pedestrians and the cars zoom across, either straight across or go southbound on Second. Remember, Andrews Street turns, is just a private driveway when you get to the back of the Dollar Store all the way out to front. And it's basically a driveway at front. There's no crosswalk there. It's not that easy to go left, south, if you come out of the shopping, that, a shopping area. So much better if you're on Bush. At the same time, don't solve all the problems for Bush and drive them all to Andrews Street. I think there's some things we can do, significant things, that will really help the situation. But there's some real reasons people are choosing Bush and choosing, being able to drive appropriately on Sixth and on Bush. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Anyone else wishing to speak this evening? Come on up, Mary.
My name is Mary Lynch, and I reside at 2690 Northwest Crest Drive, Issaquah, Washington. I want to first just talk about the calming efforts and all over in Old Town. The school zones, I really do support, that needs to be moved and reevaluated. Over there on Second Street, it needs to come closer to Sunset. This early, this September, I wrote a Citizens Act request for the radar sign going northbound because the trees have been hiding it all summer. And it took over a month for me to get a reply, and the reply I got back from the city was an indirect one, saying, you know, we've already closed it out because we talked to the homeowner and they cut the tree back. The problem is, it's been removed totally. The flashing speed sign is gone totally now. And that should be closer, I think, to Bush. The one on Sunset, I think, needs to be moved further out because it's so close to where you make the turn onto Sunset from Second, that people are already, you know, they're 25 miles an hour. If you moved it out, I think it would help. And the one coming into town off the Highlands, I think, also needs to be moved closer because people are not slowing down when they're coming down the hill until they get past that radar sign. And I think that's why you've got so many people, they're coming, speeding down from the Highlands, and they cut in on Sixth Avenue at a very high rate of speed. And I see that every day because they use that area. The other thing I want to make is a public announcement. I haven't heard it, maybe somebody has here. Starting November 21st, the school district has finally, with the encouragement from the Bus Drivers Union, has finally started mounting red stop paddle cameras on the buses. These are going to be primarily on the main roads, where we've had considerable people running through their stop paddles. On a daily basis, I get three to four cars running my stop paddle. Luckily, most of the places, I do not cross children, but I have had them run the stop paddle where I do cross children. But starting the 21st of November, if that camera catches you, you will be getting a $419 fine. And that can escalate, depending on the number that you get. And we're told that you can see if you have teeth or a piece of something behind your front teeth, that that camera will get your face, as well as your car make, and also your license number. So please, once you see a bus with the yellow lights coming on, slow down. Don't speed through. Slow down and prepare to come to a stop at least 12 feet back from where the stop paddle extends. Because if the children have to cross the street, they need at least 12 feet between you and the front of that stop arm that goes out in the bus to cross the street. A lot of times, I have cars and they come right up to my stop paddle, and that's where they stop, thinking they're okay. Well, what if there'd been a child crossing? They just ran that car over. But they stop, and sometimes I can get the license plates. But now, my bus will have one of the ones that have the cameras on it, so I don't have to try and watch the kids and try and get the license plate number. But luckily, that's done. It's been over five years that I've been going here to try and get the city to work the school district and going to district board meetings to get it done. And luckily, the Bus Drivers Union stepped up and has worked with the school district and King County, and that will be enforced now, starting November 21st. The other thing I do want to say is I got another letter from the city just this afternoon confirming that they did hear us in September. I was a little bit frustrated that it took us so much effort of coming back and bringing it again after many times to the city. But the Bergsma property, we're not going to get land taken away from the Bergsma property for Newport Way, but you've listened to the citizens there, and we're not going to have a sidewalk on the south side. We will get our road, hopefully, sometime within 40 years, but we can save our park. And thank you for listening to the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Cory?
My name is Cory Christensen. I live on Squawk Mountain, and I'd like to talk about a different topic, the cemetery. So my interest in the cemetery goes back 25 years, when I moved here. And that had been, a few years before that, there was a knock-down, drag-out battle over the Upper Hillside Cemetery, leaving the neighborhood in a pretty grumpy mood. Since then, my friends, my neighbors, were concerned that the next thing up, the next territorial demand, will be our little park. And our little ball field is our only park on Squawk Mountain, and that needs to be off limits from now forever. And then, so that's one concern. The other concern is that there's, in between the park and the cemetery, there's a trail that ends in the cemetery. And so when people walk through, from the park, through the 200-foot buffer, they end up walking across the graves in the cemetery. Nobody likes that. And we've asked for years to have a trail put in the 50-foot buffer, which runs along the houses on Mount Olympus, so people can walk respectfully through the cemetery. The real issue is the lack of sidewalks on Mount Olympus. That's the problem. And we, at our small cemetery community meeting, one of the homeowners that live there came and brought up about how the neighbors, they send their kids out there, out through the cemetery to go to the little park. Those sidewalks are important, and they would both make the cemetery, make it so we could be more respectful to the cemetery, but also make our neighborhood a lot safer. Because the, it isn't just on Mount Olympus, it's connecting to 12, to the Park and Ride, it's dangerous there. The other thing, other reason I'm interested in the cemetery is some of my friends are interested. Linda Yelm, who's in the cemetery now, David Wagner, Chuck Olson, Elizabeth Mopin, those are all people that talk about the cemetery. It's important to them. The other reason I'm interested in the cemetery is Flintoffs. I like Flintoffs. They're a great company, do a lot for this, this community. They care about the cemetery. So the, and you know, the Parks Department actually has done a good job there. Brian Bernstein, Matt Meckler, and the crew keep, do a nice, nice job keeping the cemetery up. However, the cemetery is in the dark. It's, they have kind of a bunker mentality. They're like a rare flower. Every 30 years, they come out, and right now is one of the moments where they're coming out. A year ago, the Parks Director said we were going to have a master plan for the cemetery. In the material that's before you now, that has gone away. We absolutely need a master plan. When we look at the material that they brought forth, which for the Parks Department is pretty good, there's a lot of numbers, there's a lot of analysis, but is there enough? Is there, and could I pick through a lot of that? Yes. But what is really missing is we don't have a mission statement for the cemetery. We have nothing that is a guiding policy that tells us where we're going with that cemetery. We also don't have any guiding principles that rule the cemetery. For example, I walk through the neighborhood, and one of my neighbors has a sign that says, "I love my Muslim neighbor." But for our cemetery, we have nothing in this city that says we respect other religions or that they're invited to be in the cemetery. And even beyond that, we don't do anything that welcomes those people. And one of the reasons we need a master plan and to be thinking further out of the box, more community engagement than one little meeting with just a few people, is we have people in our community from all over the world, and their needs for burials and all this sort of thing, it's out of my, it's out of my job description, but we need to bring those people in and respect their needs. So how do we do that? Most of what we're looking at now is basically headless, because what we're asking is we're asking the Parks Department, the Cemetery Board, and Flintoffs, who are all people that should be implementing policy to create the policy. And so what we actually need here is a cemetery plan where you guys think of what the policies are that, and the, and the mission statement of where we're going to go, and then apply what we're looking at now. As far as what we're looking at now, I support the fee increases, though I think the, the low-income fee needs to be pushed aside and figured out later. I do not support the upper, excuse me, the Lower Hillside Colimbariums until they are put into a master plan. They're creative, there's some great ideas, but they need to be a solution that comes out of master planning that is a broader, a broader, a broader, more robust thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Cory. Hands in the air. Anyone else wishing to address the council this evening? Second call? Oh, come on up, sir.
Ted Jeniskins, excuse me, 465 Southeast Crosseton Lane. I'm curious if there's ever any communication with the school district about the amount of traffic for parents bringing their kids to school and the kids just going to school. Is there a way to reduce that amount of traffic? Is there some kind of dialogue we can have with them? It's just, I see, living there, I see when the, when they're coming to school, they're leaving to school in the afternoon and the mornings, there's just a whole lot of traffic, a whole lot of frustration, and then you get people trying to cut through, making bad turns, and it just gets to be a mess. And that's really all I have to say is, I'm, you know, I know that there are other school districts around the country that limit parents bringing their kids to school. Less traffic, and we've got school buses, mass transit, great program, should be used. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Anyone else wishing, a couple of hands in the air. Anybody else wishing to address the council this evening? Second call. And a third call. Would anyone like to address council this evening during audience comments? Thank you all for coming. I'm just going to sort of check over at City Administrator Bob Kowits for a second and make a commitment. You know, I want to thank all those that came in to talk tonight, and a lot of folks from Old Town came in and talked. We have had, we had a project, we had a page for it on our website. We heard a lot of questions tonight, and I'm hoping that in order to be able to share the information, we have some email addresses and names tonight, but if we can be able to post answers to questions that we heard this evening, I think that would be good. Ted just asked a couple right there. I think that would be helpful.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. That is the end of audience comments, and we'll move on to committee and regional reports. Councilmember Walsh?
Thank you. The Eastside Transportation Partnership meets this Friday at 7:00 a.m. at Marymore Park, and we're going to discuss the King County Active Transportation Plan, something about walking, biking, anything that gets you active, and how we can encourage that. And we'll have more to report after Friday. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. The Cascade Water Alliance Board met on October 23rd, and the main news that is important for all of us to be aware of is that the board unanimously selected Ray Hoffman as its next chief executive officer. So there was an email that also went out to that effect, and Ray has been a strategic policy advisor at Cascade for almost two years, and he will succeed Chuck Clark, who has been the CEO since 2009. The next meeting of the Cascade Water Alliance Board will be November 20th, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray?
No report this evening.
Councilmember Winterstein?
Thank you. This Thursday is the meeting of the Puget Sound Regional Council's Growth Management Policy Board, and it'll be an extended three-hour meeting. And the entire meeting will be involved, will involve reviewing the comments to date that have been received on Vision 2050. There were many hundreds from jurisdictions and organizations and individuals, and also reviewing all outstanding amendments. So it's going to be about two, really about two and a half hours of just reviewing some of the last proposed changes to that plan. It'll still be the December meeting, or maybe even an extra meeting this year before any recommendation or final recommendation will be coming out of the board to the executive committee. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Eastside Fire and Rescue's Board of Directors next meet, next meets on November 14th at 4:00 at Headquarters on Newport Way. I do not have an agenda yet. That's my report.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Batiste?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No report this evening.
Thank you. For the mayor's report, I have quite a lengthy one tonight. First off, there will be an executive session this evening to discuss collective bargaining per RCW 42.30.140, per N4, per N.A., and pending and potential litigation per RCW 42.30.110, per N1, per N.I. These items are expected to last 45 minutes, and no action is anticipated to follow in open session. AB 7737 is the ILA for adoption for the Kokanee Work Group. On tonight's consent calendar is AB 7737, requesting the council to adopt an interlocal agreement which would provide increased financial assistance to the Kokanee Work Group to address the rapid recent decline of the native Kokanee salmon. Ew, I get timed?
Wow!
I'm never going to make that number. And native to Lakes of Amish, and of historical and cultural importance. If the interlocal agreement is adopted tonight, the city of Issaquah would be one of the first local governments to have adopted it. The city has been participating in the Kokanee Work Group activities since its 2007 formation, including meeting attendance and project collaboration support for the Lewis Creek Restoration in 2015 and the ongoing work for Laughing Jacobs Creek Studies. The city has been a financial supporter of Kokanee Work Group in recent years. A council approved $10,000 in 2017 and $5,000 in 2018. This proposed interlocal agreement allows the city to increase its financial support of the Kokanee Work Group and its activities in 2019 to $23,000, and 2020 to $31,000. Next item, the Sports Medicine Combine update. On July 13th, Issaquah held its first sports medicine combine event. It was the first of its kind. Ninety-five participants in the 5K race raised $1,000 for the Issaquah School District's Sports Medicine Program. There were 60 professional speakers and 772 attendees throughout the day. There were 60 professional speakers and 772 attendees throughout the day, with 71 exhibitor booths, thanks to our city team and partners for putting that on. Upcoming volunteer events in our Issaquah parks. As part of our continued commitment to environmental stewardship, the city is hosting two volunteer planting events later this month. On November 16th, we will have a volunteer tree planting event at Mamish Cove Park. Tree plantings will be focused along the salmon-bearing Tibbetts Creek. This event is part of a grant award that the city received to plant a total of 10,000 trees by the end of 2020 in our parks and open space system. The next tree planting event will be next spring, and so stay tuned for more details. On November 23rd, we will be hosting a volunteer planting event at our Front Street Properties, located along Issaquah Creek, across the street from Julius Bow and Pool in Old Town. This project is part of our interim activation enhancement of the site in our Old Town neighborhood. This event will also feature opportunities to learn more about our new program, the Green Issaquah Partnership. This is a partnership between the city and Forterra to grow and support forest restoration efforts across the city. Forterra and the city of Issaquah will share progress on the forest assessment work that is underway, and have activities for people to share their values, interests, and priorities surrounding forested parks and open space that will help shape the stewardship partnership program. If you're interested in either of these volunteer efforts, you can contact Chantay Florian, did I say that right? Floriani? Sorry about that. Park Planner at 425-837-3346, or register online at the Mountains of Sound Greenway Trust website, mtsgreenway.org. Acceptance of the Bergsma grant funds. On tonight's consent agenda is AB 7866, King County Conservation Futures Tax Levy Grant and Interlocal Agreement. This interlocal agreement is our acceptance of a $5.3 million grant to assist in this year's acquisition of the Bergsma property. These funds were part of the funding strategy we put into, this council put into place for this acquisition. This agenda bill is worth noting, given the creative partnership and bold steps taken by all involved. Thank you, City Council, thank you, Trust for Public Lands, thank you, King County, and thank you to our community partners, Save Cougar Mountain and Issaquah Alps Trails Clubs. We will be seeking additional grant dollars to assist in this regionally significant acquisition. As planned, park staff will be seeking state grant funds through 2020 Recreation and Conservation Office Grant Programs next year. In the end, a mix of local, county, and state dollars will make the funding strategy combined into this 45-acre acquisition. Thank you. Kudos to the Issaquah team, the council, community, and staff for showing regional leadership on this project. Newport Way Design. Adjacent to the Bergsma acquisition, the city council also received a memo today explaining that no right-of-way is needed from the Bergsma property as a result of removing the sidewalk and landscaping along the property for the design of Newport Way from 54 through SR900. The visual on the screen depicts a rendering of what the roadway cross-section would typically look like along the Bergsma property. Design is continuing without including a sidewalk or landscaping in the area, and we have, as you heard, shared this information already with the neighborhood, as Mary Lynch talked about in audience comments. And the last thing I have tonight is there will be another Coffee with the Mayor. The next one will be on Wednesday, November 13th, and it'll be from 5:30 to 7:00 PM at Cafe Ladro in the Highlands. I'm looking forward to it. These are very casual, drop-in conversations with the community, quite fun. Next, we'll be moving on to informational updates, and first up, ID 0593, Visit Issaquah Update. This is an informational-only item tonight, no council action is requested, and I'd like to ask Tim Dutter, Economic Development Officer, and Beth Javens, Executive Director of Visit Issaquah, to make a presentation.
Good evening, council members, mayor, city administration staff. Tim Dutter, Economic Development. If you recall, in the past year, the city council, the LTAC, members of the community, community leaders have all put a lot of time and effort into creating this organization, Visit Issaquah. And the mayor and I have sat down at one point and actually worked on this for a moment. It's my pleasure tonight to announce to you that it's here, and to introduce Beth Javens, the Executive Director for Visit Issaquah. Beth is originally from Western Pennsylvania. She graduated from Ohio University with a degree in organizational communication. Beth began her DMO career in downtown development with a Main Street program in Cheyenne, Wyoming. She was then hired as an account executive at Wyoming Travel and Tourism, and collaborated with visitors bureaus and chambers of commerce throughout the state. As a self-described DMO generalist, she presided over leisure and small meeting markets in California as Executive Director, Director of Sales, and Director of Sports Marketing and Tourism Relations. She is a resident of Issaquah and joins the Issaquah community from the Florida Main Street program. At this time, I'd like to bring Beth up.
Thank you, Tim. Madam Mayor, City Council, city staff, members of the audience, I appreciate that introduction. It was unexpected. It's my privilege to present to you this evening. Tim's going to click through the slides. Tonight, we're going to briefly bring you up to date on our activities since last we met, both regionally and locally, as well as to present findings from our external and internal surveys, which led to our imaging, identity, and branding. Our organization is a 501(c)(6) nonprofit trade association, and we are primarily an outwardly-facing marketing organization, engaging in marketing, advertising, and promotional group activities. Our markets include leisure travelers, tour operators, amateur and sports, amateur and youth sports, meetings, and affinity groups, and our intent and purpose is to convert day trips to hotel room nights and to deliver economic impact to the city through retail sales to the local business community. We apply annually to the Lodging Tax Advisory Commission and are fully and entirely funded by visitor spending via lodging tax. Our destination's assets are citywide and include outdoor and indoor recreation, museums, meetings, and event venues, art, parks, trails, shopping, dining, and restaurants, lodging, festivals, and events, and local attractions, and anything that would appeal to the visitor. I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce and thank our board members as a group, who are all leaders in their professions and who serve in various capacities, specifically Kathy McCourty is who's here this evening, who serves as the Executive Director with the Regional Chamber of Commerce in Issaquah. So how did we get here? As Tim mentioned, several years ago, the city and the Chamber of Commerce contracted with Roger Brooks, who is a professional destination specialist in tourism and in downtown development. And he was called in to engage the community in creating a plan for the formation of a destination marketing organization, and many people who are in this room were a part of that process. And if we can switch to the next slide, you can see that there are a lot of organizations that are on this slide that we will be working with and collaborating with for the purpose of promoting the city going forward, including Fish, the Trails Club, the Washington State Parks, Issaquah Museums, Cougar Mountain Zoo, Downtown Dia, Goon Village, and more. So we fast-tracked to 2019. Here we are to kick off our program. Next slide, Tim. He's a great assistant. In April, we had an interactive conversation about tourism at the Chamber of Commerce luncheon, and then began our immersion process into various aspects of the city and assets of the city. And in the next slide, I will show that I attended the Seattle Hotel Concierge Association Trade Show, which was hosted in Seattle, and we have a great volunteer in Charlotte Mooney. She volunteers with Dia quite a bit, and she actually introduced me to the Seattle group. She was a part of the Concierge group, and we're going to have them out here for a tour in a couple months. So in the next slide, you can see that we've been featured in 425 Magazine, actually, that's not the slide, but there it is. We've been featured in 425 Magazine several times this year with features and mentions. I've also participated with Visit Seattle. Visit Seattle partnership enables us to participate in a number of events, and that includes their annual meeting and their tourism and hotel summit and symposium, and that provides information on the tourism economy here in the area. We also, through our membership in the Washington Tourism Alliance, were able to participate as a partner and a delegate to appointment-based trade shows, both internationally and locally. So next summer, we'll see a slide for, I believe, the next slide, we'll see a slide for, there it is, AVP. So next summer, Visit Issaquah, along with the city of Issaquah, Washington State Parks, the Seattle Sports Commission will once again host the American Volleyball Professionals Tour at Lakes of Mamish State Park. And we are creating a public relations plan and enhanced community engagement promotions campaign to build on the excitement for this event, which is going to be happening in an Olympic year, which is very exciting. We think we are going to be the last stop on the tour before the Olympic Games begin in July. So this is a great opportunity for us to engage the community in the event. And then I'm also extremely pleased to announce that we were recently awarded a tourism grant on behalf of the city of Issaquah from the Port of Seattle for advertising at the Sea Tech Airport. So we have a quarterly program that rotates advertising messages, and you can see our backlit display ad at Concourse D, D2, next to Alaska Airlines Lounge, with the millions of other travelers this holiday season, if you travel through there. Our partnership with the port also affords us participation in their tourism promotion programs, and not only do we have those grant opportunities, but we can participate in their trade shows and also travel writer tours, one of which we took part in last month. The Seattle Sports Commission also refers leads to regional cities with event venues, and in the next slide, you'll see that similarly to AVP, Ironman 70.3 was one of those that Issaquah recently received. As a prospective host city, our due diligence is to visit with event organizers and coordinators from the western region, and also vet the event with several current host cities, and we did that with Santa Rosa, Coral Lane, and Indian Wells, California. This event bid is pending the formation of a local organizing committee, a sponsorship, and significant fundraising. In the next three slides, we have tourism trade events that are taking place in the fall and the winter. Some of the most prestigious meeting events and tour operator appointment-based shows include Northwest Events Show at the Convention Center next week. We are partnering with our local hotel community and also the Pickering Barn, and the National Tour Association is going to close out our year for 2019, and then we expect to launch our website, our digital platforms, and some limited print platforms in 2020. We also, as you have received, have some key findings from some external and internal surveys that we conducted this summer while we were doing the other activities. And the first external audience survey was conducted in July, and then we also conducted an internal community engagement survey. The external survey was designed to gauge Issaquah's destination awareness among participants on the survey, as well as indicate how many of them had traveled to Issaquah. So nearly 500 statewide participants had 100% name awareness of Issaquah. They all knew it. For those who had stopped several times, many of them had traveled here and spent time here several times a year, up to six times a year. They're very well acquainted with shopping, dining, and visiting with their friends and family at Gilman Village, with downtown, and very familiar with our outdoor scenery, and those were notable characteristics, as well as events and festivals, with over 80% of these trips being day trips. For those people who haven't stopped but knew Issaquah, they showed an increase in willingness to research or book a trip, and when presented with Issaquah's destination assets, showed an increase in interest. The lack of awareness of things to do, however, were ranked as just one of a few barriers to visitation. However, we see that as an opportunity to curate the narrative of Issaquah and partner with our local hospitality community and strengthen our brand for multi-day experience. The internal community engagement questionnaire was distributed electronically through the city's newsletter, also with the Chamber of Commerce newsletter, the downtown newsletter, and the Highlands Council newsletter. It's not surprising that our outdoor assets, our downtown appeal, and the preservation aspect resonate very strongly with our community, and we keep that in the fabric of our message. The summary of the key findings are located in the council's book that we distributed this evening, and the entire survey results were submitted to LTAC with our application. Finally, you have had a chance to see our logo at the introduction of the slide in the presentation. We also have additional creative that was created, including our tagline, which is, "Think outside the city, visit Issaquah." We're really proud of the work that has gone into this logo, into the creative, and I think that it reflects our, um, our image and also our designation as a trailhead city, and it has an art-forward flair. And while it's really challenging to try and create and capture all the amazing assets that Issaquah has, it's one image that we feel is very appropriate for our city and where we are as an organization at this time. So thank you very much for your time this evening, and we look forward to updating you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Apologies for mispronouncing your last name. And if you want to stay up there for a second, I want to see if council has any questions. Any questions this evening? Looks not like not. Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Beth. We'll be moving on to the consent calendar, which was distributed to council in advance, and if authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
They have.
They have? Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, I would move to adopt the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries unanimously. Oh, I guess I probably should have noted that Council President Martz had a excused absence this evening. So we have six council members here, unanimous is six votes in favor. Next item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing, AB 7757, the 2020 levy and revenue sources. We will be conducting a public hearing and maybe approving and/or adopting the ordinance. And so I'd like to invite Finance Director Beth Goldberg to make a presentation.
Okay, that was magic. Or a miracle or something. Anyway, good evening. I am Beth Goldberg, the Finance Director, and once again, I am here to talk about budgets and revenues and all the fun things we do this time of year. And tonight's topic and proposed hearing is the property tax levy and other revenues. RCW 8455 requires jurisdictions levying property tax to hold a public hearing on revenue sources prior to adopting the property tax levy for the following year. And we opened the public hearing on October 21st, and council decided at that meeting to keep the public hearing open this evening, which is how we got here tonight. The city's typical practice is to adopt the property tax levy at the meeting prior, the regular meeting, prior to the regular meeting where the overall budget is adopted. So that's, that's the sequencing and why this is, is up tonight for council consideration and potential adoption tonight. In addition, we are proposing other revenues to balance the budget. You all have been talking about them extensively and will continue to discuss them. We are introducing tonight those pieces of legislation that would be the vehicle to enact those changes, recognizing that council will continue to deliberate on these revenues, and then again, marching towards November 18th, where council will adopt and make any modifications it sees fit. So next, I want to just provide a brief overview, and you've seen this slide before, property tax, and this is based on the proposed budget. You will recall there have been some tweaks to these numbers since council began the process at the end of September, but generally speaking, property tax revenues represent about 19% of general fund revenues at about 9.4. It'll be 9.5 that I'll talk about in a moment, but 9.4, 9.5 million a year. The 2020 proposed budget recommends levying 1% increase in property taxes allowed under state law, plus new construction and capturing banked capacity. When I was here on October 21st, I had mentioned that we received updated information from the King County Assessors Office. I also highlighted some technical changes in how the numbers were calculated. So when all of this plays out based on the most recent information from the King County Assessors Office, the levy that we are proposing to the council would generate just under $9.6 million, including $169,000 for new construction and $168,000 for banked capacity. And I will say at the last meeting, I had mentioned $138,000 for banked capacity. That was based on the original number. The revised number is $167,000. So in terms of the impact on the average property tax bill in the city of Issaquah, capturing banked capacity would add roughly $12 to the average annual Issaquah property tax bill, and because of the way property tax works in the state of Washington, just a reminder that while we are, we are generating increased revenue from the property tax levy, the rate, the property tax rate is actually declining, and that is, is primarily related to the increase in assessed value in the city of Issaquah. And then, just as I mentioned at the outset, we are proposing tonight some other revenue And then, just as I mentioned at the outset, we are proposing tonight some other revenue mechanisms to help balance the budget. Utility tax and parks fees that we have talked about extensively, we're introducing that legislation tonight. It will be referred to the November 18th meeting for council consideration. And as the council continues its deliberations on Wednesday night, I'm sure we'll get some more direction from all of you about where you want to head with that. And with that, that concludes my remarks for this evening.
Thank you. Are there any council questions before we open the public hearing? Councilmember Ray.
So, I want to just get this straight. So, if we don't adopt the new property tax structure tonight, can we keep the public hearing open and defer this until our next regularly scheduled meeting?
You can. What has typically been the practice for the city of Issaquah and many other cities is to adopt at one meeting in advance, but...
We don't have to.
We don't have to, as so long as the property tax levy rate is adopted by, I believe it's December 2nd. Certainly, the end of November is when we have to notify the county of what our levy rate is. So, November 18th would be in plenty of time to do that. But if the council didn't want to adopt on the 18th, you would have a Finance Director starting to get very nervous over here.
But we don't have to adopt tonight?
No.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. So, if there are no questions, the Guidelines for Citizens comments also apply here, the same ones that, under the public hearing, the same one as under Audience Comments. And as a reminder, if you are here speaking on behalf of a group, please identify yourself as the spokesperson for the group. And if you are here listening this evening and want to indicate your support, please raise your hand when someone is speaking to support a comment that they're saying. I'll check with Tisha to see if anyone has signed up to speak this evening.
No.
Okay. And I'll now open the public hearing at 8:39, 8:34. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to speak and address the council during this public hearing? Second call? A third call if anyone would like to speak during the public hearing? No hands going up. We'll close the public hearing at 8:35?
Do you have a checklist?
Yes. Okay. Not closing the hearing at 8:35. I think, just based on Councilmember Ray's question and also the options that are in the package, before we close the public hearing, does council want to have a discussion about their desires on how to proceed tonight or at the next meeting? Councilmember Ray?
I think we still have some work to do in terms of the whole package of revenue for 2020, and this is a large part of it. At the last session, I don't, did not perceive that we were all in agreement on how best to proceed with the mix of different revenue sources. And so, my, unless this creates major problems for us, my inclination is to defer this decision until we have finished our budget deliberations, at least related to revenue that we have scheduled for this coming Wednesday.
Any other thoughts or comments? Councilmember Richstein.
I appreciate that very much. I was not expecting that. Certainly, as already mentioned, our practice of approving it prior to the final budget adoption. So, I do like the idea, and I hope all my colleagues remain open to really a comprehensive look at the budget. It's not individual lines of revenue. It's not just individual expenditure increases or decreases. It is a package. And I too believe that there is some sense that the council wants to consider the entire package. And so, by casting our votes on the property tax this evening, we would be getting ahead of that. And I have a lot of confidence that this is really about seeing things in total as a package, as opposed to just delaying or anything like that. So, I do appreciate that.
Are there any other council members who would like to comment? I have, oh, no. I have a question for the clerk. Under the alternatives in the package, do they need a motion to continue? Okay. So, you have options in your agenda bill. And is anyone prepared to make a motion? Councilmember Richstein?
I think, I want to make a motion to continue the public hearing until November 18th.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Richstein?
Any members of the public here, or watching live, or maybe watching a recording, please take this opportunity to come and speak to us. I know this matter, this issue, is of importance really to everybody. And I also know it's very, it's complex. There's many different layers. There's many moving parts to consider. But, but please, take this opportunity. I know people have busy lives, and we certainly had a lot of people here this evening to speak earlier about matters that are very important to them and their, and their families. And that's really heartwarming to see, even though some of the issues are difficult. And I'm hoping that people can find some of that same care and concern to come, to invest into learning more about the budget, and especially the revenue sides and the issues that we're trying to tackle on your behalf. And come speak to us in this public forum. Your comments would be very welcome.
Thank you. I just want to remind council members as well to make sure you're addressing your comments to your fellow council members. But thank you for encouraging the public to come. I think that's excellent. Councilmember Walsh, and then Deputy Council President Batiste.
So, I'm comfortable with the idea of pushing this off to November 18th. I think we really, we've had a good start to our conversation, but there is still much to go. And I think that this is a great way for us to be responsive and to listen. And along with those ideas, if anyone in the public were to want to email us instead, they can email citycouncil@issaquahua.gov, and we would love to hear from them as well.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Batiste.
So, I really did want to hear from fellow council members in regard to how they were feeling about this particular issue. And I feel comfortable if we would like to take the time, and that's what I think I'm hearing as well, to, to look at everything, the whole package, when we go into deliberations. And it does give additional time for emails or comments from the public.
Thank you. Any other comments? So, the motion is to continue the public hearing to the November 18th, 2019 council meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. That carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is under regular business, AB 7852, ITS Traffic Camera Upgrade. This is about bid award and authorization for funding. At the October 21st council meeting, council made a motion to award the bid and authorize the funding, and requested additional information on the funding sources and cameras. And the decision, the vote on the motion was postponed until tonight's meeting. I'd like to ask Bennett Asba, Public Works Operations Manager, to the lectern, and recognize that he has not got a lot of speaking strength this evening.
Voice is a little gone.
Thank you, Bennett.
Thank you for having me. Before we start, I'm going to use this, and I'm going to walk you guys through getting to the traffic cameras on the city website. So, this is a request to show how you get there. So, go to the city website, issaquahua.gov. You can scroll down. There's a traffic camera link here. Go to traffic cameras.
Wait, slow down.
It's nice that we can...
Go to desktop. And here you'll see all the traffic cameras available for viewing. Click on the cameras, and the sidebar shows the, the live snapshots. So, with that in mind, during the October 21st council meeting, there are some questions, and we were asked to return with the following information. So, one of the questions was investigate other funding sources to make up the additional $125,613 currently proposed to come from the remaining 2019 pavement management program budget. Staff has looked into this, and the cameras are not eligible for water or stormwater funds, as their primary use is to monitor traffic. The administration is not recommending allocating additional general fund dollars to this project due to the 2019 general fund revenue shortfalls. Basically, the administration continues to recommend the funding, the funding, proposed funding options as we originally did, utilizing the ITS Traffic Signal System Fund and remaining 2019 pavement management program balance to be used for the project. The next question was to investigate whether the new cameras will serve additional systems in future years, such as adaptive control for signal timing. Currently, the city uses traffic signal control devices at all the signalized intersections. This is called an intelligent traffic system, ITS. This gathers data from signals and uses the data to make additional timing revisions based on traffic patterns. The city's traffic engineer augments this ITS system by using the traffic cameras to monitor the intersections in real time, and in certain situation, makes manual changes to the signal timing to improve the flow of traffic. This is distinctly different from an adaptive signal control system. An adaptive control system gathers information from vehicle detection using radar, detection cameras, or loops, or in-pavement loop detectors. The system then uses all this information, evaluates the overall system performance, and modifies the signal timings as appropriate, adapting to different traffic flows. These systems include a significant amount of additional and new detection equipment, software, and other signal components working together in a synchronized manner. The implementation of the A, the automated system, or adaptive system, on the 50 signalized intersections in the city would be a significant investment. The city of Bellevue recently implemented an adaptive control system. Bellevue installed the system at over 200 intersections. The project cost over 5.5 million and was completed over five and six, six years. These costs are not able to be scaled to Issaquah's current system. And we'd need to do a lot more study in depth on how we'd be able to implement that in the city's system. But the costs of this system are significantly greater than the cameras that we're talking about today. The other question that was asked was to determine if the new cameras are capable of integrating with additional software or systems to maximize their use. Essentially, these cameras are changing from analog to IP-based cameras with all the current digital traffic camera technology. These are the newest, coolest cameras you can get. The pan-tilt zoom cameras are using the city's ITS system, pivot 360 degrees, and have zoom capability, which will give a live feed, as we do now, for the traffic engineers and the signal technicians to view the traffic flow and optimize signal operation. The new cameras provide enhanced network security and also provide the clearest picture. Since the October 21st council meeting, staff became aware that the balance of the ITS Traffic Signal System Fund is slightly lower due to the transfer out of required art fund contribution for this project. This has been corrected in the financial information section. A proposed amendment has been provided in the motion section of the agenda bill. The administration continues to recommend award of the bid to replace the near obsolete traffic cameras with 35 cameras and corresponding components. As explained in the summary statement, multiple city departments use these cameras to rely on these cameras for monitoring traffic, pavement conditions, and police-related incidents, and ensuring prompt maintenance of the signals. The cameras are also highly visited on the city website. So, that's all I got.
And I was going to say, I don't think you're allowed to ask questions, because I don't think he has any voice left to answer, but you can test him.
Sounds worse than it feels, I promise.
Maybe we can get Deputy...
You can phone a friend.
We could get Deputy Council President Batiste to go over there and read for him. I saw your fabulous performance. Thank you, Bennett. But you do have to stay up there. Questions? Councilmember Hunt, followed by Deputy Council President Batiste.
In the memo, there's a statement about the updated traffic cameras are not related to installation of an adaptive signal control system, but may support the implementation and monitoring of an adaptive signal control system. And you did mention that in your remarks.
Correct.
So, I'm trying to understand the meaning of that sentence. Do I understand that we would need more equipment, but the cameras themselves would still be able to be used?
Yes. So, to be able to implement the adaptive control program, or system, you'd need to have eyes on each intersection as it's being implemented. Right now, with traffic cameras, you can do that. One person can do that with multiple cameras, multiple intersections. They'd be able to monitor that whole thing. They're not necessarily, they are not part of the adaptive detection system itself. You would need them in order, otherwise, you have 10, you have 10 intersections, you have 10 people at 10 intersections, you know, on a radio calling in how it's all, how it's all operating. So, they're two different things, but they're going to work together under an intelligent traffic control system.
Deputy Council President Batiste.
So, I think my, my question is really a follow-on. I'm trying to actually understand that, that same, that same sentence, but I'm, I'm trying to understand it this way, or see if I'm on track. It's right now, we have analog, and we need to move over to digital. So, from a baseline, anything that, we, we don't exactly know how that installation would mesh with adaptive signal control. We haven't gotten that far.
Correct.
But at a baseline, we would need to have the digital...
Yes.
Cameras. Okay. That helped. Thanks.
I'll come back to afterthoughts, okay? Councilmember Ray?
So, just a couple things. So, we popped that up at 8:43. It still shows 8:43. Does it refresh itself?
My understanding is it does, yes.
You know what the refresh rate is?
I was told, it was every, it was getting a snapshot every two minutes, so...
Yeah, I just, some of the use cases that you describe as how we use it, I don't think the two-minute refresh rate is going to be very helpful. So, if we go to the new cameras, do you know if that will change?
That refresh rate, this is only for the public viewing. We have live feed of each intersection in real time at all times.
Oh, we do?
Yes.
So, but it's not very helpful for the public, though?
To be determined.
Okay. It's not very helpful for this part of the public.
Okay.
Okay, so, and then the traffic, I'm just trying to understand this. The traffic engineer uses this data real time to adjust signal timing?
Correct.
How often does that happen?
We currently do not have a traffic engineer.
Okay. Kirk, Kirk can come up.
Kirk can come up, though.
Kurt, City Traffic Manager for the city. So, although we don't currently have a traffic engineer doing this work, typically, they would, the way this works, when we have this person, is we have these cameras operating, they're monitoring all of the intersections that we have cameras on. And typically, they would not make a lot of adjustments. It's a, it's a complex system that's all interlinked, so you typically wouldn't make changes. But they do make changes when there's an accident, for example, when there's some kind of a, it doesn't happen often. There was a political demonstration here a few years ago, so they changed the timing at that intersection to accommodate that. It's more incident-related, that they would make timing adjustments related to the information that they saw on the cameras.
Great. Thanks, Kirk. Great, thanks Kirk. Just a couple, couple more, because I'm really trying to understand what the, what the future looks like more than even what the current looks like. And then I think you talked about this last meeting, which was taking funding from pavement management. That's because we have some fund balance left over there because things don't come out in nice tidy blocks of dollars? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we're not, we're not foregoing any pavement management to fund this, so yay. Okay. When do we lose support for the current system?
End of 2020.
Okay, so we have a little bit of time. And how long does it take us to deploy the new system if we were to like to say, okay, let's go today? How long would it take us to?
Which system?
The, the one you're talking about.
The traffic cameras?
The one we want to award a bid for, yeah.
Okay. I have to give you the same answers as last time. It's equipment purchase prior to installation, so depending on how long that equipment purchase would take, installation would be relatively quickly. So I would say if we were to approve this, I'd be comfortable in the first quarter.
Okay.
2020.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And before I go back to councilmember Hunt, I'm gonna keep moving around to those that haven't asked questions yet. So councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. Follow-up question to, probably for Kirk. So the factor in, please, when talking about changing signals, changing signal timing, the signals that are a certain distance from I-90, do we have control over those?
So typically, there is a, an area next to, to both, the interchange is both to SR-900 and to, and to Front Street that are controlled by the state. So we do work with the state on those signal timings to make sure that they're coordinated with our system, but they are in fact in control of the timing on those intersections. And typically, those are timed so that they move traffic on and off of the on-ramps the best way. So we're not, they're separate systems, but we do work together with them on those.
Okay. I ask that because one of the, I think, one of the messages that we're hearing is that one of the benefits to the community of the new cameras would be our ability to do some signal timing. And my understanding, having been around when this system was installed, is that we are somewhat limited because you can't, we can't just spot change signal timing because that affects all of the signals and all of the traffic upstream, downstream. And we are, my words, hampered somewhat then by the, the signals that are controlled by, not by us but by the state. And so I just wanna make sure that the message that we get is not being, my, my term, oversold because I, because we do have some limits with that. Is that accurate?
Correct. And in addition to that, I would say that, as Bennett said a minute ago, the traffic, just to be clear, the traffic cameras are used to monitor what's going on at these intersections. The way we time the signals and we, and the way we time the intersections is a, is much more complex based on the data that we're receiving from the, the loops that are in the ground, or we also have radar detection. So these cameras, to be clear, are not typically being used as the primary instrument by which we time the intersections.
Great.
They're a way to monitor what's going on at the intersections.
Thank you. I just wanted to make that clear because we have talked a lot about the timing, and I just wanna make sure that, that it, that it's clear what our limits are. And then my next question, this is for Bennett, can you, I didn't quite understand, can you explain the, the change in the, you said there was a change because of some change in the amount or some, can you explain that again, please?
Yes.
Not just with the fund, where it's coming from, but the, the motion, there was a change to the motion based on some new information, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So it changed the dollar, changed the dollar amounts that was coming out of it because of the art fund contribution. So there was a move to amend the motion, strike $70,690 and insert $71,492, which is the remaining balance of the IT Signal System Fund minus the art fund contribution.
Okay, but no change, no change in what's being asked to spent, being spent on the, no change in the total expenditure for, for this project?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Winterstein?
Thank you. I have a question for our city attorney, and then I have a second question for our finance director. Could you remind us again why we had to go out to public bid on this? There was something about a total dollar amount for a public works type project, that there's a state law that prevented us from being able to do this in-house and therefore be able to buy equipment at maybe 35% cheaper than we would out in the open market. Could you just tell us, remind me again about that state law that was, that is forcing this path for us?
Yes, the state public bidding law requires you to go out to bid whenever a project exceeds certain limits regardless of, regardless of whether you wanna do it with your own forces or not, you are required to go out to bid when it exceeds the bid limits. Currently, the bid limits for public works projects in this state for cities like Issaquah is for when more than one craft or trade is involved is $116,155. The, the bid limit for when only one craft or trade is involved is $75,500. And I know those seem like odd amounts. It, it used to be that the bid limits were 65 and 45,000, and I think they've accelerated those using a construction index, and that's why they come up with the odd numbers of 116, 155. But that's the, that's the current bid limits. If we were a first-class city as opposed to a code city, the bid limit, you would be allowed to use 10% of your overall construction budget for the year could be done with city forces, but that's for first-class cities and not for optional municipal code cities. And just, just so we don't see first class as being a pejorative term, the, up, up until the optional municipal code was adopted in 1965, the, all cities in Washington were divided into classes, and so there are first, second, third-class cities and towns. But once you became a code city, you, you are limited by the bid limits in the code city statutes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That just seems really unfortunate. I do, I believe our workforce is unionized anyway, if that is a law to protect union work. It seems, seems counterproductive. Thank you for that, explaining that publicly again. Beth, I have a question. It's about the money. I know that the balance required to fulfill the bid is being drawn, what we would call the balance of the pavement management program. Just, just, and I know that this is actually, we're all talking about $2,019, correct? And I don't know that there's really a separate fund, but we know that this, the, the source of the revenue was the REIT fund. And so there's some money in REIT that's been earmarked, and we have a balance left of that per year. And, okay, so, and you're, you're nodding your head, so I've got that right. And if, for instance, we, we said, go forward, but don't spend any of that balance, just do it with ITS money, that would be unspent 2019 budgeted REIT dollars, and they would just remain in the REIT fund?
They would either return to the REIT fund or they would remain in the street operating fund. And the reason why I'm saying both is that is part of our efforts to become more rigorous with how we're managing different pots of money, where I would like to see us go, but we have not done this particularly well. And this is part of the fund reconciliation that I keep talking about, is if there's unspent designated dollars, REIT mitigation dollars, things of that nature, either when the project is closed or if there's unspent money at the end of the year, that money should return to that designated fund. The city has not had that consistent practice. So in this case, it would likely stay in the street operating fund even though they're REIT dollars. And you might recall, last year, the street operating budget was running at a, at a deficit this, about this year, about this time last year. And the fund then ended 2018 better than we expected. The expenditures were less, there were revenues in there, so it put the fund back in the positive. So it's all, it's all balancing out. But over time, I would like to see that money returned to, to, you know, the source revenue fund or the, the source fund.
Okay, thank you. I think I learned something in that we do actually move, transfer the funds from REIT to street operating fund. So it's sitting there designated for a given use, so it's allocated inside that fund for management.
Correct, correct.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just gonna see if councilmember Walsh has a question. If not, I'm gonna go back to councilmember Hunt.
Thank you. It's a question for the administration. I wonder if it's possible to have a timeline or estimate of a timeline when we could revisit existing technologies and maybe consider other options. Right now, we have some information in our packet about how much it costs to do a traffic system with different technology, but that city is much larger than our city. And I think, and it even says it's not scalable, it's not particularly comparable, so I wonder if we can revisit. And the context, too, is that it, these cameras are 12 years old and on Windows 7 operating system, so I'm wondering if we can revisit this shorter timeframe.
Councilmember Hunt, members of the council, I agree we need a better plan. And I, I, I think the work that both Public Works Operations, Public Works Engineering has done over the last couple of weeks, is I think you really challenged us as a staff to kind of come to grips with some of this, with the occasion of this bid. I always suspect that a part of the 2020 work plan will be a, a look at how we look at transportation and mobility more broadly, and I would think that that's a piece of that. One thing that really hasn't come up, which we talked about in the budget deliberations, is there is a, what I believe a key staff member vacancy here that we need to bring on to help bring all this together as well. So I can commit that as the council convenes in January and looks at its plans for 2020, this will be on it.
Thank you. Any more questions? The, the interesting thing here is that this is a live motion, meaning the motion was made and seconded on October 21st, and that original motion was to award the construction contract to Titan Earthwork LLC for the amount of $372,385 and directing the finance director to include $70,690 from the ITS Traffic Signal System Fund balance and $125,613 from the remaining budget of the 2019 pavement management program in a subsequent 2019 budget amendment. So you have some options now. You can make a motion to amend this main motion, you can withdraw the motion, or you can deliberate and proceed to vote. And if we are going to go forward with the motion or an amendment to the motion, we'll be looking at some revised numbers, as Bennett had mentioned in his presentation. So what is the council's pleasure? Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. As I did the last time we had this talk, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and move to amend the motion. And the reason I'm doing this is so that we can deliberate. Like I said the last time, when I made the motion, I stated my opinion at that time, although it could be changed, and so that gave us an opportunity to deliberate. So that's what I'm gonna do now. I'm gonna make, I'm gonna move to amend the motion to strike $70,690 and insert $71,492, which is the remaining balance of the ITS Signal System Fund minus the art fund contribution.
Second. Okay. Discussion. Who would like to start?
I'll, go ahead.
Since you made the motion, yeah.
Sure. Well, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna support it because I don't, I, I think the amending it leads us to a substantive discussion, so I would be supportive of it.
Councilmember Ray?
I'm, I'm gonna support the amendment because it, it provides the, it makes the, the original motion correct, and to have a discussion about an incorrect motion seems to me to be a fool's errand.
This is all about the amendment, not the main motion. Any other comments? Discussion? A vote on the, do I need to reread the amendment, Tisha? Okay. A vote on the amendment to correct the numbers to reflect the contribution to the arts fund? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? I carry unanimously. Main motion? Who'd like to start? Councilmember Walsh, councilmember Winterstein, councilmember Hunt?
So I appreciate city administrator Bob Quitt saying that this coming up and our conversation challenged the administration to have a conversation about how we should be approaching any of our intelligent traffic systems. I think from my perspective, the main question that we had asked on that previous meeting was would the new cameras that are proposed support any needed adaptive traffic signalization? And from my perspective, I think we've gotten that answer, which is that these cameras would not be involved in a new system as far as the running of it. They might be used to help install it or something like that. But generally, these cameras aren't as much for traffic administration as public safety and public information, and it sounds like these are moving us in the right direction. Now, if anyone has any comments saying, hey, we've missed the mark, we haven't considered X, Y, and Z, I'm open to those ideas, but generally, I think this gives us the upgrade that we need while still leaving us open to pursuing something that is adaptive traffic as needed.
Thank you. Councilmember Winterstein and then Hunt.
You'd think this would be simple, but it's actually not very fun. Though Bennett, you're doing a great job. I appreciate it. Because it's, for the reasons, you, you heard me say it earlier, just the fact that we were, were forced to do this, it's unfortunate. We are actually considering spending the people's money, public money, in this way. I do believe it's an asset that has a value both to the city as, for our own operations, for all the reasons cited, and as, and for our citizens. I, I use it. And thanks for the demo. I forgot how easy it was to get there, but especially during inclement weather and especially during the snow season. And, and not only for myself personally, but also for, for family members. So I, that's how, it, it's a benefit. I, I believe others use that. The, the angle I was taking earlier about the funding, again, it was all about, it's all about the, the 2020 condition, and boy, if we could not spend something that we thought we were gonna spend in 2019, that just helps us for 2020. I mean, that was, that was the angle. It would just leave more balance in these accounts. In this case, not REIT anymore, I realize now, would be the street operating fund. And, and in consideration of that, and also knowing that pavement management is about, it's about the roadways, it's about the quality, it's about maintaining what we have. This is another ask, which is about the use of our right-of-way about the roadways and maintaining what we have and bringing it up to a, a new and better standard. All of that is to say that the, the resistance I had to the proposal is dissipating, and I'm likely to support it.
Thank you. Councilmember Hunt, councilmember Goodman, and then councilmember Ray.
I, I think the thing that still stands out to me is that there's a security gap pointed out here, so the use of Windows 7 also creates a security gap once that is no longer supported. I think that generally maintaining our assets is important, and why I asked the timing question is because I think we haven't, we haven't visited this at, at a rate that would be most beneficial in terms of understanding all of the technologies that are out there, all of their costs, all of the benefits, what their limitations are. As councilmember Goodman mentioned, maybe there are some, some intersections, we can do things differently. differently, or some intersections where we can't use certain technologies. So, I don't think we've really had that information presented. And also, these cameras have been there for 12 years, and that's probably far too long to go without assessing the new technology. So, I do think we need to maintain our infrastructure and our technology. And so, I still lean in favor of this, but I also would very much like to have a more in-depth look at what else we might do, because traffic and signal timing is something that is a major concern for the community. And I think it would be much appreciated if we could do something better. And then I also wanted to point out that I know the website is getting a redesign. This is one of the most visited pages on the website, so we need to be very cognizant that people are trying to find it. So, as we do the website redesign, let's make sure that it's still able for people to get there quickly.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman?
So, I agree with all those comments. And I, like I said last time, I can't imagine just deciding to not replace cameras that need to be replaced. That would just be a giant step backwards. My understanding from the comments, and maybe I'm wrong, so Bennett, if you could clear this up, my understanding was that these cameras potentially could be used within, potentially with an adaptive system, or did I miss that? I mean, if we were to...
They can be used in the sense that you'll be able to view the system.
Yeah.
As it's being, yeah. It's not, it's apples and oranges.
It's not the system.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Not controlling the system.
Exactly, okay. So, I think potentially, that's good to know, that if we were to be able to have a new system in the near future, I think that would be fantastic. The list of things that we need to do to bring us closer to 2019 is long. I highly doubt that we're going to have the money to have an adaptive system or something like that very, very soon, which means if we don't approve this, we are very likely going to have cameras that aren't supported with software. I think that would be, I think that would not be a good move. I do think we need to upgrade the cameras, and I appreciate the comments from the city administrator that we're going to look at a, take a higher level look, at the same time, broader and deeper, and I appreciate that. But I'm going to support, I'm going to support replacing the cameras.
Thank you. And Councilmember Ray?
So, we're good through the end of next year on the current technology. And so, after our last conversation, I went and did a little research on the city of Bellevue. And the results were pretty staggering in Bellevue. And they saw intersections with reduced wait times of greater than 40% reduction in intersection wait times. So, there is some real advantage to deploying adaptive signal technology, without a doubt. The technology that Bellevue deployed was 2010-era technology. It wasn't 2020. And just because I'm feeling something today, the iPhone 4 was big in 2010, and the iPad was first introduced in 2010. Technology has come a long way since then. So, I actually believe that there is a technology solution out there that is not going to be of the cost magnitude of Bellevue's, that can help us to deploy adaptive signaling much more cost-effectively and much quicker than we are imagining. And since we have time to think about this, because we don't have a security problem until the end of next year, and we don't have unsupported system till the end of next year, it's my belief that we would be best served to say, let's figure out where we're going with an integrated system that involves both our cameras for things such as public safety, but also how that integrates in with not only providing data for our traffic engineers to do ad hoc changes, but how that might fit into a more comprehensive adaptive ITS system. We have an opportunity here to leapfrog a generation of technology, to go from circa 1999 technology, which is what we have right now, to go into circa 2020 technology. And I think it's worth taking a breath, taking a step back and saying, can we, and how would we go about taking advantage of this opportunity where we have to replace the cameras, to not just replace the cameras, to replace the current functionality, but to replace the cameras to allow us to take a step forward and really address one of the biggest problems this town has, which is traffic, which the current system isn't going to move the needle on. So, I would like us to take a step back, do a little more research, and come up with a plan that drives us in a broader perspective.
Thank you. Deputy Counsel President Batiste?
So, I think that, to paraphrase Councilmember Winterstein, this should be easier than it is. I think it's unfortunate that we're up against the technology deadline that we are, and having no support after 2020 with analog cameras right now is something that greatly concerns me, and I do wish we had more time to evaluate. But I am concerned that without making this move from analog to digital as a very important step that we might get into next year, and then basically have, you know, a system that we've, we've put money into and that we need to support and not be able to go forward and do that financially. And I think if I'm understanding this correctly, and I tried to ask this question, but I don't know if I did it in the greatest way, is that we, right now, we have analog. And in order to move forward, it seems to me we have to have the move over to the digital cameras. And we don't have all the information about exactly how that's going to integrate, but we're using them for different purposes. And so, the actual system that we're, the additional system that we're talking about is almost, to me, I hope I'm understanding this, a little bit separate, and a separate conversation that we need to have, and I think a really, really important one. But I don't, I'm not positive that we mix those two together, because we still have to do the upgrade to the digital cameras. So, for those reasons, I would support this this evening.
Thank you. Is there any other comments before I call for the vote? Councilmember Goodman?
I still have a question, because after Mariah's comments, I'm confused. So, can someone explain to me? So, I understand analog, understand digital, or at least the concepts. And I understand the word "software." So, tell me, can the cameras, these cameras that we would be buying to upgrade, could they be used with a different system that we would potentially buy in the future that would help us more with traffic? Or is that a completely separate system that would have completely separate cameras?
So...
Based on what we know now about adaptive and other technologies? What I'm trying to figure out is, if we replace these cameras, we use them, or are we going to have to buy all new cameras for those same intersections anyway, because it's a completely different system, or...
Sure. So, let me, let me take a stab at that. So, I think an easy way to think about it is, these cameras that we're proposing to, for, to purchase for the almost $400,000 is, is to view the intersections. Just think of them as cameras. So, that's one piece of that. And that's an important piece of running a city's traffic system. And it's really important that we can see, for all the reasons listed in the agenda bill, both for maintenance, both for the traffic engineer, for the public, to see what's going on at our intersections. That's a very important, that's, I believe that's of high value to the city. So, these cameras will support that function, be able to see what's going on at the intersections, and will replace all these aging cameras that are more or less on their last legs. So, and they will serve us well, my understanding, for many years into the future. So, that's one piece of it. I think that's an important reason to support this and to move forward with these cameras. Now, there's this other piece called adaptive signal technology. And that's, I would think of that, I think the easiest way to think about that is, that's separate. So, adaptive signal technology uses detectors. You're probably most familiar with the loops that are cut into the circular loops at intersections. There's also radar detectors, there also are camera detectors. These are not camera detectors. These are camera viewing cameras. So, an adaptive signal system would likely consist of one or more of those detectors, both the loops and radar detectors, and possibly camera detectors, along with a pretty sophisticated computer system. And what it, in the big picture, what an adaptive signal control system does, it takes all this data coming in from all these intersections all over the city, it measures what's going on with traffic, and in real time, as Councilmember Ray pointed out, what Bellevue is doing, in real time adapts the signals to changing traffic situations. So, a real simple example that in Bellevue is Snowflake Lane at Christmas time, when they let the, Snowflake Lane is over, everybody wants to go home. This adaptive signal system senses that and changes those signals in downtown Bellevue so that people can get out of downtown Bellevue quicker than they could if they just had standard signals, which is what we have currently. So, that's the difference between the ITS system that we have now and adaptive signals, which is what we're talking about. The cameras, again, allow us to monitor what's going on. The cameras are not, these cameras, both now and in the future, will not be the cameras that are controlling those intersections. Does that help at all?
Yes. If the, if we found money and we decided to get an adaptive technology system, let's say we did that in 2020, with these cameras, and then we bought these cameras, with these cameras, would we no longer have a need for these cameras?
We would have a need for these cameras, because the adaptive signal system is controlling the intersections and changing the timings of the signals, of the signal heads, changing the green time, changing the amount of red time. That's what the adaptive signal system is doing. What the cameras are doing is monitoring what's going on at the signals so that we can see what's going on, so that Bennett's crews can see what's going on, so that you all, so the community can see what's going on at those signals. They're two different functions.
Okay, so, you're saying that if we got a system, next year, just say for the sake of argument, there's not going to be any staff member that comes up here and tells me that we no longer need the eyes-on-the-street cameras, we need both?
Correct. So, I just want to be really clear, these cameras are not going to help, these cameras will not, in and of themselves, make, help make our traffic signal system function better. All they're doing, their eye, as Bennett said, their eyes on the intersection, their eyes on the street, so that we can see what's going on.
Councilmember Winterstein, Councilmember Hunt, Councilmember Walsh?
Adaptive system doesn't need cameras. Is that a correct statement?
I'm sorry?
The adaptive system does, an adaptive system doesn't need cameras.
An adaptive, is that correct? An adaptive system may use cameras that are, that sense tra, that they're not these cameras. They have cameras that actually can count traffic. So, and a use of those is sometimes at construction sites, when the loops are gone, we use cameras to pick up traffic. So, there are cameras, that's what's confusing, there are cameras that can sense traffic. These are not that. An adaptive signal system can typically use the loops, it can also use radar detection, but it would not need these cameras. That's correct. Thank you.
Councilmember Hunt, Councilmember Walsh?
Just for our information, I was looking at Bellevue, they have a lot of these eyes-on-the-street cameras also, and they look, the view looks like this. So, I think, I think there's a need for this sort of eyes-on-the-street camera regardless. And if we keep using the Bellevue example, they have those cameras as well, although...
Thank you. Councilmember Walsh?
Are there any cameras that would be, play both of those roles, eyes-on-the-street and detector cameras, that we could consider as an investment?
My understanding, and I'm not, we haven't done the, all of the research that the, that our administrator suggested that we need to do. My understanding is no. There are, they're two distinctive technologies. So, there are detector cameras that measure traffic, and there are camera cameras, to use, for lack of a better term, that take pictures of the intersections. And the camera cameras, these cameras are what we're talking about here. So, they're, they're two separate technologies.
Councilmember Ray?
So, I want to be really clear. I'm not in any way suggesting we don't replace the cameras. I'm just saying that there are a lot of questions that we don't have answers to right now about, about this technology. And there's also, and we talked about this last time we were here, there are big voids throughout the city where there are, are no cameras. And so, we have grossly over-served areas, and we have grossly underserved areas if we, if this is a core city service of providing access to these cameras. And so, I just, we have time. You know, Councilmember, Deputy President Batiste was saying, you know, I wish we had time. You know what? We have time. And that's why I kept coming back and asking you how long this is going to take to do this. So, I feel like we are facing a lot of questions right now that we don't know unequivocally the answers to. And we have time to get the answers before we make this decision. And so, I'm having a hard time getting behind rolling forward with this award when we have time to get the answers to these questions before we move forward with, with this investment. And it's, it's not a trivial amount of money, and it's more money than we anticipated. So, like I said, understand the need, completely supportive of filling the need. I just want to make sure that if there's a better way to do this, and there's, we can address a couple of things at one time, that we do that. And I'm not comfortable in saying we know that answer right now.
Thank you. Deputy Counsel President Batiste, Councilmember Walsh?
Councilmember Ray just reminded me of something that we talked about, I think, last time we were going over this. We have some new cameras that we were looking to install this next year. Is that correct? For some of the underserved areas, we, I know Councilmember Marts, or Council President Marts had asked some questions.
High elevation cameras.
Excuse me?
They're high elevation cameras.
Yes.
To monitor snow and conditions of the roadways.
And we have, could you tell me more about what we've got down?
We purchased cameras already for the top of Squawk, Talis, Montro, and the Highlands. And we're working on getting those installed.
Okay.
That is separate from all of this?
From, yeah. Okay, I was thinking of, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Walsh?
What's the cost to the city to rebid something? Because Councilmember Ray's point was, we have time, we have the opportunity to think through some of these other questions, but doing so does come at a cost to us, because we have to advertise the bid and put that out, and there is a distinct cost to that. So, what approximately is that?
Councilmember Walsh, members of the council, a good amount of staff time. I mean, Bennett, how much time have you spent on this project in the last three months?
A lot.
And so, we ask a lot of our senior Public Works staff. And so, if this has to go back out to bid, then there are other projects that get put aside in order to go through that process. So, I, I think it is the value of key staff time more than anything else. And it's a policy decision. If the council feels that this deserves another look, then more time will be spent, and other projects will be put aside in order to spend the time that we have already spent.
Is there any actual cost, like money that we have to output in order to advertise a bid, or something outside of staff time?
I don't believe so. I think, again, it's the mechanisms of putting that out, reviewing the bids as they come in, answering questions, adjusting the bid specs. So, really, it's that lost opportunity. Whatever else is on the staff's list of perhaps unrelated issues, those projects get put aside in order to spend that time.
Okay, thank you.
Any other, Deputy Counsel President Batiste?
So, I just, I just wanted to follow up. Now that, now that we've had the discussion about... Now that, now that we've had the discussion about these really being two separate systems, we've got the eyes, camera cameras, and then we have this, this adaptive or other technology. So I really do believe we, we do need to look into that as we go forward, but I, I really strongly feel that, that it's important, we are, I feel like this is a case of just us not keeping up with the, really the, the infrastructure that we have. We're, you know, we're dealing with analog cameras. No matter what, it seems to me, we're going to need those cameras. They're, they're two separate systems. And for us to be waiting and then maybe go through another bid process and an RFP process, I, I kind of feel like we need to break these two issues apart. That's how I'm, I'm feeling about it. And we really need to upgrade the tech, this piece of the technology and then move forward and find out what we can do for the future.
Any other comments? Otherwise, I will reread the motion and call for the vote. Okay. The motion is, all those in favor of awarding the construction contract to Titan Earthwork LLC for the amount of $372,385, including sales tax, and directing the finance director to include $71,492 from the I T S Traffic Signal System fund balance and $125,613 from the remaining budget of the 2019 pavement management program in a subsequent 2019 budget amendment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That's five in favor and Councilmember Ray opposed. Thank you. That was, it did appear like that might have been a, a simple item to discuss, but this is the second time around and we still had a lot of questions. So thank you for that. And thank you, Bennett and Kurt.
Thank you guys.
A B seven eight five oh is the next item under regular business. Proposed 2020 budget revenue sources dash utility tax. And the expectation is this may be forwarded to the November 18th council meeting. This proposal has been discussed during the 2020 budget process, and this is the first time the agenda bill is before council, and Beth Goldberg will be, Finance Director will be making the presentation.
And Madam Mayor, members of the council, before Beth speaks, she has short presentations on each of these items with slides you have seen three or four times before. So perhaps if it's useful, we'd be happy to answer questions. Again, this is setting votes, there's no final action being requested. We're happy to go through the presentations, but again, you have seen these slides many times before and your option to see them again.
Council preference? Nobody wanting to see the slides or have Beth speak again. Okay.
I don't think that we said that.
I know. You did not. It just sounded funny. Would somebody care to make a motion then?
I would. Madam Mayor, I would move to forward A B seven eight four nine to the November 18th, 2019 council meeting for deliberation and action.
Second.
Seven eight five oh. Am I on the wrong page?
You're on the wrong page.
We're doing seven eight five oh first?
Seven eight five oh.
Would you care to amend your motion and see the second degrees?
Seven eight five.
Really jumping ahead.
Just read it again. I would move to forward A B seven eight five oh to the November 18th, 2019 council meeting for deliberation and action.
And the second degrees to that change?
Yes.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously. Now, A B seven eight four nine. Is this, City Administrator Bob Quitz, this is the same? Or does this one require a presentation?
Yes, the only question I would, and, and the Parks and Rec Director's coming up, we are asking the council, in this particular item, to consider one additional change dealing with fees for the Pickering Barn for the year beginning January 1, 21. And Jeff can explain quickly why we've, we've added that.
So this would be new information for the council this evening?
Yes, thank you, City Administrator Bob Quitz. Yes, quickly, we've spent a lot of our time under these items in park recreation fees dealing with 2020 revenue impacts. I did want to point out in the presentation that you'll notice in the ordinance as well, some proposed 2021 fees, as was stated earlier, for rental facilities. This is because of our pre-planning. Those facilities are available to be booked a year ahead of time. So these would be fees we would be marketing next year in 2020. We wouldn't be actually recognizing that revenue until 2021. Just wanted to point that out. And again, this would be forwarded for November 18th and open for further discussion during council work session or at that future time. I just wanted to point that out, though.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Batiste?
I was going to go forward and make a motion.
It seems like that's acceptable to the body. Go ahead.
I would move to forward A B seven eight four nine to the November 18th, 2019 council meeting for deliberation and action.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Thank you, that carries unanimously. Next, A B seven eight seven oh, proposed 2020 budget revenue sources dash cemetery fees. Any new information?
No, ma'am.
No new information for this evening?
Have we seen this?
Councilmember Hunt.
I have a question, if it's appropriate, okay. So during public comment, there was mention of master, master planning effort, and so I wondered how the fees would fit into or what the, what the plans are for that.
Yeah, thank you for that. That's a, that's a great question. And as we pointed out in our staff report that you received on October 7th, the work that we've begun this year, the coordinated work with both the Cemetery Board, Flintoffs and the community, these proposed fees are not an end to that planning effort. And as we pointed out in that staff report, there's further actions, further next steps we see happening in 2021 is continuing on this really good cemetery planning work and, and fully seeing that through. And then secondly, you'll be seeing a management agreement that we've been working on with our longstanding partner Flintoffs that we would be bringing before you as well. So though there is a recommendation and an urgency with the opening of Section 2 in Upper Hillside Cemetery for these proposed fees, these proposed fees do not, like I said, represent an end to that planning work. We really feel like we're on the front end of the work that's going on with the cemetery, and that would all, continue to involve community engagement. But there's wide support by both the Cemetery Board, community, and our, our partner Flintoffs for these proposed fees at this time.
Thank you. I'm assuming the council is fine with not going through this presentation, but are there any other questions? Councilmember Ritterstein.
Have we seen this presentation before?
This presentation? No, we have not. You've seen the content of this presentation in the staff report dated October 7th.
What is the council's preference? Would you like to do a brief, fast fly-through? Councilmember Hunt?
So my preference would be to do that, and one of the reasons is because we also have a policy question in the memo, which is about, does the city wish to offer a diversity of memorial spaces within the existing footprint of Upper and Lower Hillside Cemetery? I think maybe one of our committees did a deep dive, but I don't think that the full council has really considered that kind of a policy question. So I'm wondering if we can just go through this so we're prepared for that.
Okay. Is, head nods?
Happy to.
This policy question that I'm referring to is on page, hmm, page three of our A B.
Okay, happy to go through the report really quickly. I think I touch on that, Councilmember Hunt. If not, I can, I can go further. So like the previous agenda bills, this is an introduction to this ordinance. The timeliness of this and the beginning of this work in 2019 really is, is brought on by two key points. One is the last major area of the cemetery, and that's Upper Hillside Cemetery. Section 2 is now eligible to be opened. What that means for it to be eligible to be opened is we are at a or near capacity within the rest of the cemetery. So we're at a, at an important point of that cemetery filling up. The second key point that really started this work was looking, beginning to really take a sharper look at the long-term sustainability of the cemetery fund and the long-term maintenance needs of this property. Meaning as we sell that last plot, where are we going to be financially? And I think what we identified and began to see is that cemetery fund is not in the healthy place that we feel that it should be when we reach that, that critical point in the future. So the proposed fees that you see in front of you, I'll touch on the last bullet, really represent the, the work of coordinated effort and coordinated work with both the Cemetery Board and our, our partner Flintoffs. These proposed fees are in alignment with the, the market rates in the area. You'll notice in your agenda bill, Exhibit B, this is the same exhibit and information that was in that staff report dated October 7th, where we did comparative work with cemeteries, both public and privately operated cemeteries in the area. We also took a look at the long-term financial health of the cemetery fund and the fact that looking to add capacity within the cemetery, within the existing footprint of the cemetery, as opposed to needing that cemetery or feeling the pressure for the cemetery footprint to expand, but by increasing that capacity primarily with niches and diversifying memorial spaces, we can greatly, greatly improve the financial picture of the cemetery fund without needing to expand the footprint of the cemetery. A comparison was done in Exhibit C, which again is in the agenda bill as well. That comparison was provided to you in that staff report on October 7th. So the recommendations related and around these fee increases really seek to accomplish two goals. And these were two goals that we talked at length, again, both with Flintoffs and with the Cemetery Board. And that is the ability, these cemetery fees would provide us the ability to begin to look at ways through this continued cemetery planning work to add potential capacity within the footprint of Upper and Lower Hillside Cemetery. And we would be able to, in the cemetery fees, look to adjust not only the current cemetery fees, but also create some new fees for additional types of memorial spaces. So diversifying the, the spectrum of offerings that we have within the cemetery. And then what we found, and Alan Flintoff was very helpful in this work, knowing the market and knowing the industry, that we're really in a position and a place of, to be able to diversify what we're able to offer within the cemetery will position us well now and into the future with that operation. Next steps, really just related to the cemetery fees, is on November 6th, later this week, continued deliberations will take place for the overall budget. This is certainly an opportunity for further discussion there and feedback. And then, as was stated with the earlier agenda bill's adoption, this agenda bill will come back with potential modifications and adoption for the fee increases on November 18th. I'd like to point out at this time, there's already one modification that we're working on that came from our conversations last Monday on October 28th. We've met already last week with Alan Flintoff to begin to look at how we might be able to create a financial assistance program for eligible low-income customers seeking cemetery. So we made some great progress last week. We will be adding into the agenda bill not only what those eligibility requirements would look like, but then how and what those discounted fees would look like as well. So that's already in the works. And then, as I stated earlier, these are next steps, really represent the proposed fee next steps that are in front of you. But again, I would just want to reiterate, there's a lot of, a lot of work that we're doing with the cemetery and beginning to really take a long view at the operation of that cemetery, and that is work that will continue on into, into 2020. I think we've made good progress this year and look forward to seeing that work continue next year.
Thank you. Questions? Councilmember Ritterstein.
Thank you. You, you talked about this other area is now eligible to be opened. What, what part of the, is that the Hillside Park area?
No, 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 no.
To be clear, right.
Thank you. No, it is not. So Upper Hillside Cemetery, when it was approved and plotted, included two sections within Upper Hillside Cemetery. Section 1 has been open since it began. Forgive me, I don't have a map. I can certainly have a map for the agenda bill, but the section 2 is within the planned and plotted footprint of Upper Hillside Cemetery.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ray?
Did I hear you correctly that these proposed rates are a step, but there may be additional changes in the future? Or, no, I did not hear that correctly.
No, we're not, we're not planning changes to the, to the fees in the, in the near future. I think the planning work is more looking at how we prioritize creating these spaces. Some of this, as is identified in the agenda bill, will require some investment via the cemetery fund. So how do we prioritize those investments is the work ahead next year.
And so what you're looking for is for us to adopt these, this new set of fees with the 2020 budget?
Correct.
Any other questions? Councilmember Hunt?
In the ordinance, there are the fees for these additional, additional types of graves. So by authorizing the ordinance, we would also therefore, in its current form, if we authorize the ordinance, we would also be taking that policy step of authorizing these different forms. Is that correct?
Correct.
That second policy question, that's how it works then. Basically, by authorizing fees, we're also authorizing these different.
Correct.
Things like niches. Okay.
Any other questions? Would anyone care to make a motion?
Madam Mayor, I would move to forward A B, I may be on the, no, I'm good. I would move to forward A B seven eight seven zero to the November 18th, 2019 council meeting for deliberation and action.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Are there any items this evening for Good of the Order? I have, I just want to, oh, I think I have a couple, actually. I just wanted to remind you that I will be making some phone calls about SCA, possible SCA applications for vacant seats tomorrow, if I haven't closed the loop with you this evening. That's all I had. And, oh, Councilmember Goodman?
I just quickly wanted to say that generally I like the new layout in the council chambers. One of the things I noticed, however, is that when we have speakers up to this new podium, that I noticed that the folks that were directly behind, particularly in the first row, it appeared to me that they were having to lean to the right or to the left to see the screen. So I don't know if that's true, but I just wanted to mention that maybe somebody, we can get some people in here to try it out.
Thank you. And I'd just like to thank the team that worked on the new setup for the room, too. I think it works a lot better, and I've been in this room for 25 years. So thank you very much for that. Any other Good of the Order items? I'll talk a little bit about upcoming meetings. November 6th, there is a budget study session here in council chambers at 6:30. It will be the continuation of budget deliberations. On November 12th, there is a council study session at 6:30 in this chamber, 2019 comprehensive plan amendments. November 18th, the regular city council meeting at 7:00 PM. And potential agenda items are the Southeast are the Southeast 62nd Street Extension Project, the 2020 legislative agenda, the inter-fund loan for Southeast 43rd Signalization Project, amendment to the inter-local agreement with King County relating to recreation facilities, that's Julius Bone Pool, consideration to support a regional clean fuel standard, low-income utility discount program, and proposed 2020 budget revenue sources, dashed park fees, utility tax, and cemetery fees. There also is a public hearing, 2020 budget including salary ordinance with council adjustments. We will be going into executive session this evening, so as earlier announced, there will be an executive session this evening to discuss collective bargaining per RCW 42.30, .140 per N4, per N A, impending and potential litigation per RCW 42.30, .110 per N1, per N I. We have scheduled 45 minutes for this time, and I'm looking to see if folks would like to start with a shorter period of time, just in case. Okay. 25 minutes, and we will extend if necessary? Okay, so expecting it to last 25 minutes. No action is anticipated to follow an open session, and we will now recess into executive session at 9:53.